September eighteenth, we'll call a meeting to order at seven oh six. We please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Sorry, we're a little late. We had a work session and it took us right up till the time, so. Anyways, welcome. We'll move on to the next lease week. Hold please.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Yep.
Here.
There we go.
Here. Next, we'll adopt the adopting the agenda or the corrections or additions to the agenda. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Draw. Discussion. Hearing none. All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same side. Motion carries. Moves us to visitor presentation. Tonight, we have an update from Chief Cyber on the changes made during the two thousand twenty-three legislative session affecting school resource officers, which you're gonna hear as SROs.
Mayor, before Ryan gets going, one of the things just to note in this, this is probably something that you've heard in the news over the last several weeks. It I gotta I gotta say, it's it's been one that Ryan and I have spent a lot of time talking about because there was some pretty significant changes made within the law that really creates some pretty potentially significant issues for our school resource officers, not just in Chaska, but across the state. Obviously, our number one objective is to try to keep kids safe in the school and to, you know, be able to to work on creating those relationships that are important between police officers and 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 the students that are in there and, you know, try to be preventative about things that are going through. So we thought it was really important as this discussion continues to evolve, we've seen stuff come out every week for the last, well, since school started and even a couple of weeks before school. We thought it was really important to sort of bring you guys up to speed on what that issue is because to me, as I've watched the news stories, they've they've been very unclear about what the issue is, you know, what what it is, what it isn't, you know, why there's concern that's out there and what does that potentially mean for SROs? So I think Ryan will do a really good job here of just sort of presenting what are the facts as we know them and give you guys an opportunity to ask some questions on it.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Matt Matt keyed it up pretty well, but what's important to me is just to mention two other things. Number one, tonight, as staff, we're not making any recommendation to council to make any kind of change with the existing contract with the district. It's more or less to bring you up to speed. The trends that we've seen, the changes and how that might, how that does impact us. So if there is a trend, some type of event that may cause staff to rethink the contract with the district, then at least as council, you have the the basic information before you. So on slide one, to provide you a little bit of the context on this is, if you recall, we currently have two SROs staffed in local schools. One of them is at the high school and then the other is at the IAA Integrated Arts Academy. And obviously, they'll they'll take responsibilities as needed at the middle schools, in elementary schools in the city. Some of the core fundamental tasks of SROs is they're engaged with the students of the schools and with the staff. They also respond to calls that might occur on the premises of the schools. They initiate and follow up on investigations and they respond to emergencies. I think they perform a very vital task or tasks within the schools. So in state law, there is a chapter one twenty-one A, which has been around for quite some time. And the intention of this is to govern the rights of students, responsibilities and behavior. In two thousand twenty-three, as part of the legislative session, lawmakers included provisions in that education bill that amended the chapter and limited the use of force that could be used on students by SROs. On slide two, talking more about the changes to chapter one twenty-one A, that now applies to all peace officers who work as SROs or any officer that might under be under some other type of contract with the school district, and I'll get into that in a little bit. What essentially happened there is they put language in that an SRO or any officer under a contract with the district is now a quote unquote agent of the school district, should be relevant as we go through the additional slides. Next slide, please. So this is something I that perhaps has caused some confusion and it was important to me to put to put the specific language into the presentation so you can be aware of it. So the previous law, when it came to use of force, read that reasonable force could be used to quote restrain a student or to prevent bodily harm or death to another, which in a minute will be important as a distinction. Following the amendments, agents, which now would include include school resource officers, could only use reasonable force when it is necessary under the circumstances to restrain a student to prevent bodily harm or death to the student or to another. So if you hear on the news or some type of an article that you might read when they're calling for a special session, they're asking for clarification or change, you might hear that one word needs to change. And those that are on the side asking for change is to revert back to or, which when we get into some of the scenarios and further discussion, will make sense how such a minor language change has been very significant. Next slide, please. So in other words, the authority to use force for the sole purpose of restraining a student has been removed from the law. Thus, force cannot be used where the only justification is to control the behavior of a student who is damaging property, causing a disturbance or acting out in a way that does not pose a threat of bodily harm or death. And I'll I'll give you a real life scenario on this in a few minutes. What I think is important to recognize is that these types of situations are really fluid. So I'm gonna talk in a little bit about an example that happened at town last week, which involved property damage, throwing of chairs, other types of furniture around the classroom, which necessitated that that SRO was basically observe and request for a patrol resource to assist. And recognizing that these situations are fluid, it can go from property damage very quickly to some type of assaultive behavior. And I'll talk about, you know, some of the liability and the inaction and confusion in a few minutes. Next slide, please. I think we covered point number one already, but the second point is that SROs and contracted officers are legally permitted to use prone and compressive restraint towards a student, but only when necessary to prevent bodily harm or death to the student or another. So that opinion came from the state's attorney general that if you had the likelihood of bodily harm, you had bodily harm or the possibility of death, that a prone restraint or some type of compressive restraint, which I'll define here in a minute, could be used. But in the actual legislation itself, it says that you cannot use the prone restraint. So there's already ambiguity between a legal opinion and what's on on paper with the legislation.
Explain real quick, sort of the people have some, I think, misconceptions about what prone positions mean. Maybe you could just sort of explain what it is and isn't.
Absolutely, I that might be on the next slide. I promise it's in here somewhere. And that is something I wanna just kind of get in and at least, you know, answer some questions or provide some clarity on where I think there is confusion in what prone restraint means, which I think is coming up here shortly.
Sorry.
No, no, it's a great question.
Just wanted to make I just wanted to make sure.
So from a statutory definition, prone restraint is quite broad, which is simply placing a child in a face down position. So this could include just momentary instances. And to Matt's point, when it comes to a prone restraint, when you're dealing with a hostile or combative individual, it is very common for their limbs, whether it's their arms, it's their legs, they're gonna be flailing. And the likelihood of injury either to the officers or other bystanders or even to that individual is much higher. So what you'll see with a prone restraint is it's a common tactic when you have somebody that's actively aggressive. When they're taken down to the ground, it's a mechanism to control limbs. It's to put handcuffs on the individual. And in no way, shape or form, when done correctly, it does that place any pressure on the individual's back. It doesn't prevent their ability to breathe properly. And also, part of our training is putting somebody into what's called a recovery position as soon as possible. So when a prone restraint is used, somebody's handcuffed, that act of aggression has ceased. You put them into a seated position. They're not left on the ground laying there. But prone restraint is oftentimes used as a means to stop that act of aggression, use a number of different officers to control arms and to control legs. It has a misconception that that involves somebody, you know, putting their knee across somebody's back, across the back of that individual's neck. That's just not how that particular restraint is trained. Next slide. So compressive restraint is another term that's as part of this legislation. This is something that includes movements by SROs that could result in straddling a pupil's torso. So the best way I could describe this prior to this legislation is if you had something, let's say in a lunchroom, that's not quite yet a physical fight, but maybe there's words being exchanged, things being thrown at one another. This potentially is where you would see an SRO take intervention and maybe grab a kid from behind, you know, with their arms around their torso, chest, stomach, as a means to try to remove one of those potential aggressors from the scenario. But with the current legislation, that would not be allowable unless it was a bodily harm or or death situation. Other provisions restrict any form of physical holding that restricts a pupil's ability to breathe or places pressure or weight on the pupil's head, throat or neck. And I can tell you, you know, certainly myself, but also law enforcement in general, there's no objection at this sort of restriction. We're not doing chokeholds. We're not restricting people's breathing. I just think it's important to throw that out there and there might be a misconception here is nobody's asking for law enforcement to have this type of authority. However, which I think I covered this already, certain compressive restraints and prone positioning are occasionally necessary. And in some of the scenarios that we're gonna talk about, I'll explain what that means. But in general, that would be for controlling limbs, legs, arms, taking people into custody. And then again, it comes back to a training procedure or protocol and how we take care of those people after the fact and put them into recovery positions. Next slide, please. One of our biggest concerns that we have as part of this legislation is it essentially creates a two tiered system when it comes to use of force. So you have our SROs that are governed by this chapter one twenty-one A in the restrictions on using force unless you have bodily harm or death. And then you have the rest of law enforcement that are not agents or under contract with the district. And from an administrative standpoint, it's very difficult to even contemplate. Varying standards. It's very difficult to train out from in SRO, somebody that's been doing the job for a while, what these new expectations look like. It's very challenging to develop guidelines for how SROs should react in a particular situation. But I can tell you very high level, my guidance or suggestion to our SROs has been if you're in a situation and you're in doubt, don't do it. Don't use force. Call for a patrol officer and observe is the guidance that we've given to our staff.
One thing I'll point out with that is, you know, keep in mind, SROs were able to deal with these issues immediately when they'd have it was pretty clear that they're trained as an officer. They go through the same training as any officer. They are a police officer. Now we're sort of put in a situation where there's different standards for the SRO versus the street officer. And so we're having to tell, and you'll see this in situations that that Ryan talks about. We're telling our SROs, if you have any question about it, don't do it. Well, now you have to wait for an officer to come. And it and things escalate pretty quickly in those types of situations. And so something that could have been a simple issue to be able to deal with in the school, you know, when the resource officer is there, becomes a very difficult situation to deal with when you have to wait for an officer to come who has the ability to deal with the with the situation differently than than an SRO does. And again, there's there's a good example of something that happened actually here right in town. It wasn't with our SRO. It was with the Cover Tony Sheriff's SRO this last week, but really gives a good example, I think, of of saying, okay, what can happen if you don't address issues right away and they can get out of control?
In the other noteworthy item too, as we talk about the SRO being an agent of the district, but this also would include any officer under a contract with the district. So in the past, we've worked contract overtime for football events and other types of sporting events where, you know, there's gonna be a large volume of kids, maybe rivalries from different communities. That technically would also enter us into a contract. And I want you to know that we're not leaving, you know, the school district on their own. We're still gonna recognize public safety needs when they occur. That's just simply going to be supplementing our patrol resources when needed to make sure that we can respond accordingly, but not doing so under a contract. Also, I just want to note, part of the ambiguity and confusion is that all sworn officers in the state are already governed by two types of use of force statutes. Six oh nine oh six, which is just the general use of force statute, and then six six zero six six is also the deadly use of force statute. And there's, I could go through this probably all night, but this is where the confusion gets in because our training protocols, post board mandated policies are built off of those two particular state statutes in introducing this new legislation under two eighteen A has caused a great deal of ambiguity. And hence the reason in part why a lot of agencies have pulled out of their contracts. The other thing, just, you know, putting it out there is obviously there are civil liabilities associated with this. If an SRO was to use some type of a force that was in violation of two eighteen A, it could potentially create civil liability for the city as well as criminal liabilities for the officer that might be involved. Next slide, please. So it was important for me to throw a few scenarios out there, and this came from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust that did a legal review. So the first scenario, I just inserted some names, that Officer Bob is an SRO. A student is causing a disturbance in the lunchroom by screaming and throwing food trays on the floor. Because this behavior does not involve a risk of bodily harm or death, Officer Bob may not use force to control the student's behavior or use force to arrest a student for the commission of an offense, even if it appears likely that the offense will continue. And we have a real life scenario that was very comparable to this. And when I talk about these situations being fluid and dynamic, what starts out as, you know, property issue, throwing food trays could quickly escalate into something that could be assaultive in nature. Next slide, please. So the next one has Officer Jones assigned to a regular patrol duties in his dispatch to the high school. The principal complains that a student got into a conflict with a teacher and is presently in a hallway kicking locker doors and bending them. Officer Jones is not an SRO or under a contract working in the school and is therefore not subject to the new restrictions on use of force. Accordingly, Officer Jones may use reasonable force to make an arrest or carry out other duties imposed by law when intervening in the situation. So again, this kind of gets back to an example of that two tiered system, which would involve those that are SROs and then regular patrol officers. And then the third scenario talks about a student who has previously trespassed from school and returns to the school building after being expelled. The principal orders the student to leave and she refuses. The principal calls SRO Paul and repeats the order for the student to leave. SRO Paul informs the student, she will be arrested for trespassing and she refuses to vacate the property. The student still refuses to leave. Technically, the SRO could place the student under arrest for trespassing. However, legally, the SRO can only use force, including handcuffing in situations where it is necessary to prevent bodily harm or death. Unless the student complies, the SRO will need to wait for a patrol officer. So again, this is another situation where somebody is in the school. The SRO would have a lawful reason to normally arrest that person, which is talks about technically having the authority. But even handcuffing in the scenario could be a use of force.
So the person could have a firearm and by not being able to really control that student, that thing could escalate way faster.
Potentially, I forgot there. Correct. I mean, unless the the SRO was able to see.
Not if they don't know that there's a.
If they don't know it and all of a sudden while you're waiting, they pull it out later. Where under this normal probability, they could handcuff her and they don't have to worry about that. But if they have to sit and wait for another officer to come, we're sitting there, she that person could pull out a handgun, you never know.
Is the verbal threat of saying, well, I have a bomb on me or I have a gun, is that enough for them to use force or is that still not enough?
I think it could be part of the totality of the circumstances. I think a a comment like that, you know, especially combined with prior information or if there's any other type of, you know, situation occurring with that individual, I think that could be could be evaluated whether or not it gets to the likelihood of bodily harm or death.
What about like, I mean, you talk like that first scenario is like someone's students throwing stuff and they just run to the kitchen, they start throwing like kitchen knives, right? Not exactly without harm, right?
That I think would change the dynamic. If you had some type of a weapon, something where reasonably it could show that inaction could cause bodily harm, I think that would would prompt the ability to take action.
Because it feels like very gray, right? I mean, it's like I said, well, I'm just holding a knife and just like just spouting off stuff, right? Which I can see somebody like a mental health break, you know, having some crisis, right? Then, you know, there's it's kind of gray. It's very sort of, you know, situationally interpreted, right?
But I think that's the point he's making. He's putting, he's putting the officers in a very gray area and they have to worry about what is the recourse if I do something.
Like as a weapon, what's deemed as a weapon, lunch tray could be deemed as a weapon in certain circumstance.
That's the great part of this is because.
Courts could look at it differently.
Yeah, the the great part of it is it it's probably really crystal clear if somebody pulls out a gun.
Oh, yeah.
And it's probably pretty crystal clear if somebody pulls out a knife. But if somebody throws a pulls out a tray, lunch tray, is that, does that constantly, you know, and they're just throwing around a chair. There are some people that might say, yeah, I think that absolutely is. There's other people might say it was a tray. You know, it was a it was a chair. And I think it's that that grayness of that scenario that's really causing some real heartburn for the SROs. Because keep in mind, the SROs, I mean, this is their license. And so it's their professional license and something that that it's it, you know, it it constitutes their livelihood. And so they're very careful about, you know, not wanting to sort of cross into those gray areas. Not doing it, you can, what can happen is these situations can start to get out of control. And now maybe a tray does become a weapon against somebody, but before it could have been stopped before that even became an issue.
So I mean, is there a risk that, you know, like, you know, in Uvalde, there is, there is a lot of, a lot of a lot of criticism because the the police didn't act soon enough. But in a sense, we're sort of tying, you know, tying our SROs into a position where they're being, you know, their their best interest is to not act until the threat of force is either imminent or has occurred, right? Or like some physical harm either is imminent or has occurred. And by which point it's already too late.
Yeah, it's sort of taken away that ability to be preventative.
And that and this, my greatest concern is that you put, you know, SROs on this front lines, you don't do it, don't do anything. But, you know, this human nature say you can't, you can't even point the firearm at somebody who might be threatening because they look threatening. But by the time you, by time some, you know, someone might come in, then pulling gun, shoot the principal, right? Or whoever it is, or shoot a staff member. But by that point, it's too late and now you have to react with with the with appropriate force. By that point, now someone's life is, you know, in critical danger, right? I mean, is that the position we're leaving our SROs in potentially?
It's definitely a position of ambiguity, where oftentimes it's it's difficult to establish guidance or guidelines on how to react in a particular scenario.
Yeah, that trespass example, example, someone wasn't supposed to be there. Camps is, if you get them off the property before they get to the classroom, discover that they brought a gun, right? That's much easier, much, much dangerous, right? Depending on bigger campuses, as an example.
So.
Um, it's like. So it's important to note that prior to the start of the school year, our staff did meet with staff from the district and we talked through the legislation and potentially how our responses might look differently this year. And we committed to a continued working relationship with one another, but yet still recognizing that we would have to evaluate trends, things that we might learn regarding this new legislation and SRO roles as we move forward in the school year. We also, I had mentioned, we provided guidance to our SROs based on the information that we know and possible scenarios. But what I can tell you is our SROs, they remain committed at this time to working in their roles. They value the relationships, the partnerships and what they do in the schools daily. But it is important that moving forward as an agency and with the district, that we do understand the training challenges and some of the liabilities that do exist. Next slide, please. So I think it's important here in the past week to talk about some of the new challenges that we've seen related to this legislation. And one of the big ones came out just a couple of days ago or you know, a couple of days ago on September fifteenth. And this was an opinion from the post board. And the post board is the governing body that handles all police licensing in the state. And they issued an opinion that SRO conduct that violates that two eighteen A could potentially result in serious sanctions on an officer's license. Violation of this chapter by an agent of the district could be construed as unreasonable for excessive use of force. And as the chief law enforcement officer, we would be required to report a possible violation of this, which would be reviewed by the post board. And it is likely or possible that they would issue sanctions on that individual's license. And if a license was suspended or revoked, it's possible they would no longer be able to be employed as a peace officer. Next slide, please. The other challenge I wanted to mention, and this, as Matt had mentioned, relates to a sheriff's office deputy here in town at a at a school where they're contracted for SRO services. And this was an individual very similar to one of the scenarios, but a student was upset and started throwing around chairs and other furniture inside of a classroom, which prompted a partial lockdown of the school because there were other students nearby in a classroom. The deputy just stood by and observed the behavior because at that point it was solely just property damage in nature. There wasn't enough to show any type of bodily harm or obviously death at that point. But the SRO did request the assistance of one of our officers who ultimately responded. During the course of this, that student shoved one of the deputies and also there was some type of an assault on our officer as well, no injuries. But that prompted the student to be taken into custody because obviously it was a bodily harm situation. One of my concerns with this is if, under the previous legislation, the SROs would have dealt with this as a property damage incident, which is a misdemeanor. But obviously, it had to escalate to the point of a physical assault on the deputy, which is a felony, and the person was brought into custody. So I just have a concern in terms of what this does to students and juveniles, what would have been a misdemeanor, they're probably gonna get adjudicated at a felony level, which is a much more serious offense. And to Councilmember Wong's point, I do also have some concerns when it comes to liability about inaction. So, you know, I'd say a video was taken of this that shows an SRO standing by when furniture lunch trays are being thrown around, but maybe now that turns into an act of assault on a student. How that would be perceived and whether or not inaction could cause liability. Next slide, please. And like I said, at this time, we're not making any sort of recommendation for change. But I do want to make you aware of some possible alternatives if we do get to the point where we have to rethink our ability to facilitate the contract. But it's worth noting at this point, probably about forty or fifty Minnesota agencies have made the decision to remove SROs from their schools, which that list continues to to grow. And I think many other agencies like us keep evaluating the feasibility of keeping SROs in their schools. But some agencies have assigned their SROs to patrol duties and put them in areas that where their schools are located. And they might at certain times allocate them to foot patrols or community engagement inside of the schools. So I think what's important is just to note that we don't wanna, we don't wanna end what we have established in the schools, which is great rapport building with students. I think it allows for early intervention with issues. I think the SROs do a very good job handling sensitive situations, working with school admin and are just generally very good liaison between the school and the police department. So in the event that the contract is no longer feasible, I think there are some potential alternatives that we could consider. But we would just have to find ways to remove that designation of them as an agent or under some kind of a contract with the district. Because once that's removed, the provisions of that two eighteen A would no longer apply.
The challenge with that is that, you know, the school district actually pays for half of the of the services. It's a budgetary impact for us. Now, let's say that we had to do this tomorrow because, you know, there's all kinds of situations that could pop up because it seems like there's different opinions that come out like every few days. I mean, the one that we've really been paying attention to is the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. Is, you know, what if at some point the league came out and said, we just think there's too much liability for cities to have SROs in school with this ambiguity? We're gonna tell you that they can no longer be agents of the school. Well, we don't necessarily, like Ryan said, want to be in a position where, I mean, these are all our kids. I mean, my kid goes to high school. I mean, your kid goes to one of the school. I mean, we all have, I mean, these are, these are our kids. And so obviously we all care. And so, you know, we wanna be able to at least have alternatives in the pipeline that if we all sudden get pushed to a certain point where it's just like, this is just too much liability either for the officer themselves or for the city, um, that we start looking at, are there ways that we can at least, hopefully until something gets resolved from a language perspective, where people start feeling more comfortable about, uh, what this language is, um, be able to, to provide some level of service to the, to the school. Now, again, that would have to involve us, uh, you know, actually taking on the cost, uh, of doing that. Because agent of the school by definition is somebody who is paid by the school. Um, now we're sort of in a good position right now because we have a position that, uh, we have not filled, uh, yet that, that in the short term, we could probably use as a way to, to fund if we had to do that. We're not saying that, that we're there now, but this is such a fluid situation. I just, I, I think it was really important to both Ryan and I that you guys understand what the issue is and why cities have been concerned about this. And that there may be scenarios as we go down the road that, you know, that, that we receive that just all of a sudden, like, either the SROs themselves just say, I just don't feel comfortable with this anymore. Um, which it's really tough to go, I mean, it's their license, you know, it's, you know, to put them in a position where they're completely uncomfortable uh, with the situation. Or like I said, we may get guidance from the League of Minnesota Cities. So says, we think you should take them out. I, anything can happen. I just don't want you, I, I, I think we just both wanted to make sure that you guys sort of understood the issue, had a chance to ask questions. And that if we get to a point where we think something's just untenable, that, um, that hopefully you guys understand that, you know, sort of what the, the issues are. Um, I can tell you, we, we've had enough discussions and, and I know you, that Ryan had a great discussion with our SROs this afternoon too, about sort of where are they at? And I think everybody remains committed to say, we wanna be in the schools. We wanna be there.
Is there a way around it by like an independent contractor situation in which they're only, it's only billable by incident?
No, as soon as you're paid by the school, you are an agent of the.
Is it, and so I have a few questions. First is that, you know, from a SRO's perspective, you know, if SRO said, you know, I'm just not comfortable because I don't want to risk losing my license, right? You know, are they obligated to stay in that role? Or is it one of those things, we just reassign them and find someone who'd be willing to do that?
I mean, they technically would be able to resign from those positions and then it would be incumbent upon us as staff to decide, do we fill that position? If the answer was yes, then we would post internally and try to fill the position. Um, my concern would be that we would not have anybody voluntarily interested for the assignment, which if we were to fill it, have to force it. And then I would argue, we, I mean, don't get me wrong, all of our people are professional and they're very capable. But when you put somebody into a position that maybe doesn't have the experience as an SRO, and maybe their heart isn't in it like our SROs, I, I think it would compound the, the challenges that we face.
I think, I mean, hon- honestly too, I think we can't discount the fact that, um, we wanna make sure that we have good long-term relationships with our officers too. And if they have real legitimate concerns about their professional licensing, I, I think it'd be really difficult to not take those into consideration.
Why would another officer want?
Why would another officer want it? I mean, if the, you know, if, if somebody who's trained in it and actually, you know, ha- has that experience of saying, I, I just think this is well beyond what I, I think is good for me to take on from a liability standpoint. I, I think it'd be very challenging to get other people to say that they want to apply for it.
Sure. And but I'm just asking that because, you know, concerned for their well-being and their professional licensure as well, right?
I mean, because these guys are super dedicated.
Absolutely.
And, and it's, I mean, we, one of our SROs is, is new to the position because we had a retirement. And he's like, man, I, I've been talking to him for the last three months and he's like the most excited guy in the world because, you know, this is sort of a dream job to him. And you, you better believe it's, it's difficult for him to have this as sort of his first challenge as he's coming in there. Because, you know, this is something that he's really wanted to aspire to be in his police career. And, you know, so it, it's hard, it's, it's hard to see the impact it's having on the SROs too.
I think about it as a student, when I was in high school, I had an incident with a gentleman who made school feel unsafe for me in my teens for a while. And our SRO that was in the school, she was a great deal of help to make me feel safe while I was at school, getting to and from school. So to lose that is difficult when you have situations on the receiving end of someone who is at school with somebody that doesn't make them feel safe.
So, let me, I have a couple of other questions. So, one of them is that, you know, we have like contract services for events like football games or whatever, right? Now, anyone who's, the, under the, based on the presentation, anyone who's part of that, that detail, who's working that would be considered an agent of the school. So if there's like some sort of scuffle or something like that, it happens. Now, suddenly our liability isn't just like one person, it's potentially multiple that are involved for that, right?
We've actually dealt with that different, maybe you could talk about that. So, uh, what we would do in the situation where a, a contract is being requested, and I already referenced this or mentioned it to the district, is if they make a request to us, we'll evaluate it administratively. And if we feel there's a public safety need to staff additional resources, we'll add them to the patrol shift. Um, whether that's through an overtime shift, or it's just if we have ample resources. And we would have people attend that just on the city's time. So we would remove any type of, uh, you know, a contract.
And then the last one is that, is that, do we feel it's a, uh, a sort of a, I know, probably what best to describe is that escalation danger, right? Because, like, for example, a lot of kids, they're smart, right? So you feel like, hey, you know what? I can get away with almost anything doing this, right? So the ones who are bad, it's like, you know, I'm gonna take you back. I'm gonna push you in the hall and shove you or whatever. I'm not causing bodily harm, but I'm just letting you know that I can get away with stuff because I know the law is like on my side, right? You know, it's one, we kind of in danger of there are our officers basically taking kind of chronic abuse from some kids who are just, you know, trying to push in those boundaries because they know they can and they can get away with it. And what are the consequences to them? Because now suddenly our officers in this position where they're taking this abuse because they can't do anything legally because they're not being really harmed, right? What's, you know, how, how does, how's that play out?
And I think there's a high likelihood of that. And that may have been at play in that incident last Thursday that I referenced, um, where the individual just thought that the officers would not be able to go hands on with them. So I think that plays into my concern where what would have been a misdemeanor now turns into a felony. Um, because the, some of these kids may feel emboldened, um, that there's not going to be a consequence for their action. So I think that's a very real possibility.
It's not like, not every kid's gonna know this law either. So that endangers them as well because now I think, oh, that person can't touch me. But this person who came in, they can't touch me. There, you know, there's no obvious difference between SRO officer showing up, right?
Like, see, that's the crazy thing. They both look the same, right?
So it's like, oh, that person can't touch you. But wait a minute, you're touching me? You can't do this. And the other officer's like, no, I can't. And all of a sudden they escalate something, you know, that they didn't need to because they, again, there's not a clear and obvious difference.
Well, and it's, it's like, it's like Chief said, it's creating a two-tiered system. It's treating one officer differently than another officer.
It would be a possibility for, I mean, if, for example, the officer was being shoved, those types of things. Doesn't mean that the things that these children might be doing might not be crimes. It's just that the, the SRO wouldn't be able to use uh, force to, to restrain them. So they could still be charged criminally if they did something that rose to the level of an assault or something like that.
It's kind of like the trespass example, like if they're still trespassing, I just have to wait patiently for you to, you know, can you please put these handcuffs on yourself? You know, it just seems strange, but, right? You know, but they'd still be the crime of trespassing.
One, one thing I will point out is that the attorney general came out, um, I think it was three weeks ago, four weeks ago, came out with an opinion that, um, that the only way that this change can be made, like, I, I think there was some attempt to see if the attorney general could make an opinion on this to see, uh, see if, if they could say, hey, are we looking at this wrong? You know, is there other ways we can look at it? He came out with an opinion that basically said, um, the only cha- way that this can change and get clarified is, is through the legislative process. And so that's why you've heard sort of a push for there being a special session, um, to address it. Because quite frankly, a lot of this came up about two weeks before the school started. And, you know, because the law went into effect and on August first, and quite frankly, there wasn't law enforcement at the table to comment on, on these changes that were being made. And so it became apparent pretty close to the beginning of the school that, uh, year. And that's why, you know, just terrible timing because, you know, you had a lot of these agencies that are like, whoa, this is a big deal. And so they pulled out, like Chief said, we've been working to try to find ways to stay in. Um, but that is pretty clear right now is that the only remedy to this would be a legislative type of remedy.
I mean, well, well, the, the intention of the law is well-intended. And so of it undermine, you know, or undermine good officers' intents to work with schools to protect students, staff, leadership there. And I know it's really frustrating because, you know, it, it also puts an undue onus on, you know, licensure for the individuals who are SROs in this role. And I know, I mean.
Well, I don't think this has done anything to help. I mean, this isn't.
I, I, I think intent was to protect kids who are, but like I said, it, I'm, I totally agree with you. I mean, it doesn't.
It was so much making it, trying to make a decision that they knew nothing about.
Exactly.
Without any input from, from PDs.
It's like.
So, I guess I'll throw out, why, why, why do we wanna continue with that possible liability? I get it. I, I mean, I understand we should, we wanna be there, but we're putting ourselves in a bad spot. One, we're gonna get it if we engage. If we don't engage, we're gonna get it. Because why haven't you done something? You're right there. I, I don't know. I.
It's not just incidental things. I, like I mentioned, there are sometimes things that are happening between students where other students are just not feeling safe. And having a presence there is helpful in case something should happen.
I understand, but I'm most worried about overall liability of the city.
I, I get that.
Chief, what, what percentage of the work that the SROs do on a daily, day-to-day basis? I mean, it, there's not very much that gets, that deals with these. I mean, there are issues they have to deal with like this, but a lot of their daytime is spent with sort of this rapport building and, and meeting with students and dealing with issues and things like that. One concern we have is, is losing that.
It, it, very infrequent, I'll be honest. Um, it's, it's hard to give you an exact percentage or number, but most of what the SROs deal with, it is rapport building. It's investigating instances, incidents, and it's just, it's working with students, staff, uh, faculty. Um, it, very rare, uh, for our SROs to use any kind of force in the school. Uh, but nonetheless, I mean, it, the liability does exist. There are significant training challenges. Uh, a lot of uncertainties and unknowns. So that's why I felt it was important to bring that, you know, before you. Uh, so you hear this information firsthand if, you know, circumstances were to change. But to Matt's question, I, it's very rare where our SRO is arresting somebody in the school, especially using force.
Don't you think that overall, this is, it's gonna have to be temporary because you're starting to see the, the media now are saying this school, this school, this school. They're all leaving. It's a, it's a domino effect. And don't you think that that's gonna be enough pressure on the legislator to, to say, we had, we're gonna have to go and correct this? Cause they're the ones that are ultimately gonna get pointed at eventually to say, hey, you took the power away from that. And ultimately, it's still the school's job to provide safety. That's why we're there. It's not the city's responsibility. I, I get it because it's our guys. They wanna be there. They wanna be part of it. But overall, we have to look at the giant, big picture of this. What's the best thing for the city? And I'm not so certain it's protecting the school. I, I know that I'm gonna get a lot of bad comments about this, but I, we have to look at, like I said, the big, big picture of how could this affect us negatively? I mean, we, it's, we're in a bad situation. We can't win. We're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't. And.
I, I, I can tell you from at least my perspective, where I've felt, I mean, the, again, the reason we bring this up to you is we may run across a situation where we just say, this is untenable. This is, we've reached a point where this just, we can't stay in here.
The letter from the post board kind of tells that? I thought that, I mean, that really.
Post board letter basically said was that if you take some of these actions and they're deemed to go outside of what your authority is.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that you can be, there could be a complaint that's brought to the post board. It's.
But then, then we as an organization have to initiate that complaint to the post board. So it's just.
I mean, I, I, I can tell you from my perspective, I've looked at just the fact that, you know, I think Chief has spent quite a bit of time, you know, you know, talking with the SROs about what, what you can and can't do. Um, you know, when, when you're there. And quite frankly, that's the same thing that the sheriff's office did. And there's a reason that one of our officers ended up at that school was because that SRO is, was like, I don't have the ability to deal with this by myself. I need a patrol officer to come in. Quite frankly, that's probably the same scenario our officers would find themselves in if they had a similar situation, they'd have to, the tactics change. Instead of them dealing directly with the individual, they probably spread people out and spread the, the bystanders out and call in a patrol officer to, you know, to, to actually deal with the issue itself. I get what you're saying.
We solve the problem for the legislature, it's just gonna carry on. But if all of a sudden everybody says, no, we're out, now the legislative has to take action. Or they may not, but.
Yeah. I'm not so convinced that that's.
Well, but at some point, at some point, there's gonna be citizen involvement to say, hey, what's going on here? Why, why, why is this, why is this happening? Why are we doing that? But I just think if we keep enabling, it's never gonna go away. And we sit and carry that strong case of liability all along, not to mention putting two officers or three or whatever, uh, in a bad situation, that isn't gonna change. I, I, I know it's kinda, it's kinda harsh. It's ki- kinda like being a bad parent, but I, I'm just not really in big favor of this continuing on like this.
What I can't say is, I, I try to stay out of the, the political arena and things, but what I can say is if ultimately there was a decision made, um, that the contract was not sustainable for the city of Chaska, I do think we have some alternatives, um, which would change the scope of what our SROs do. Um, but I still think we could fundamentally provide many of the same types of, of services to the schools.
It feels like we're operating in a gray area, right? I mean, that's very much where we are today. So what's the tipping point for us?
Well, to me, the tipping point, you know, I mean, there's clear tipping points. I mean, there's clear tipping points if the, uh, if the SROs come back to us and say, we don't feel comfortable anymore. Uh, there's clear tipping point for me if the League of Minnesota Cities came and said, we think it's a bad idea for you from a liability standpoint for, you know, keeping your, uh, officers in there. Point would be if we ran into an incident that, that, uh, you know, just had way too many op- operatives. You know, just had way too many opportunities to, to go wrong. I mean, I, it's, it's hard to think of all the clear.
But we know that, that opportunity will go wrong. And then we're sitting with some sort of litigation because that's what's going to push it is to that level, but.
Yeah, I, 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 I hear what you're saying. I really do. It, this is, this is a tough one. This is a real tough one because it, it puts us in a situation of, of wanting to. I mean, obviously we want to do what's best for the schools. But it does create this ambiguity that is really challenging. To deal with. I think we've managed it until this point, but. You know, I think there, there could be a time where we get to a point and say, we just don't think it's manageable anymore.
Finances aside, is it, does it change? Is it changed the status of our SROs to operate within the schools if we have their permission, but they're not fitting the bill? I'm not, but money aside, money outside of that, just from a legal perspective. But I'm just, you know, but.
So long as they wouldn't be taking direction from the school district or from the teachers or the principals. Where they'd be operating as an agent of the city, as the, a police, um, an officer of the police department and not. As any type of, you know, taking direction from the principal, from the school administrative staff, other than what you'd get from a normal citizen complaint.
So it sort of becomes a little gray because like, for example, they have like a desk there at the school. Say, hey, you're welcome to sit there if you want, right? But, you know, or it's like, hey, could you ask somebody there or, you know, about this? Cause someone's, I, you know, I haven't complained about so and so in the lunchroom or something like that. Then it starts becoming gray again.
They, there would be. You'd be most advised with the safest option would be to make sure that everything was done very formally, that every time you had an incident like that, you wouldn't have. The officers going and dealing with something that wasn't a criminal complaint, uh, a, a criminal complaint that wasn't outside of what you'd normally engage the police department to handle.
So.
Although that's a little ambiguous too, because one of the, one of the things that we do as, as a police department, our regular officers is community engagement. And so it, it's not like that's not a part of our normal type of activities too.
Right.
And to your point, council member one or your question, I, I think the way it would look is hypothetically. The current SROs would be assigned to patrol assignments, same work schedules. I mean, nothing would really change. We would assign them in the particular areas of the IA in the high school and we would do directed patrols, which would be, you know. Foot patrol, for lack of a better term, inside of the school, community engagement. But business would be done a little bit differently. I mean, I think the point, not taking direction from. School administration, certainly the financial piece wouldn't exist. It just would be. Finding a mechanism in a satisfactory manner to remove that kind of expectation that, 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 that officer is an agent or under contract.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and it's been quite common for a lot of metro agencies that have made the decision to. Remove themselves from the contract to reassign staff through those means.
Our legal counsel have an opinion?
Well, we're with specifically with regard to.
Whether or not we should keep the SROs in the school or not. I, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I, this is kind of getting to be a weird deal. Is it, is it wise for us to carry that liability?
All right, look into it and prepare a memo.
And that's, and that's fine. I, like I said, I just, you're sitting here and. You know, you've been, you've been helping out on comments, but I'm just curious what, what your thoughts are on it. I, I just. Like I said, I, I just. I, I just struggle with the fact that. Has the school been doing any lobbying with the legislators to say, are, you know. That, hey, we're concerned we're going to lose all of our SROs or is that our job to spend all that time doing something that's helping them? And that, I just, I, I haven't heard any outcry from the schools.
I'm not aware of any lobbying efforts on that.
That's. Okay. So I guess to close it, unless someone else has any comments, we're keeping ours in place right now?
That would be the case because this presentation tonight doesn't have a recommendation. Which obviously would be a motion of counsel if we did get to the point where we want consideration to. Pause the contract or some other type of, uh, reclassification, but no, tonight there's no staff.
There, there is no intent for staff agreement. It is more educational, uh, in nature because. The dynamics of this are changing so quickly. I mean, I think it's, I, I, I mean, I think it becomes your prerogative if you think we should, uh, look into this further. You know, and go beyond, um, you know, what, what we're proposing at this point is really. In essence, what we're saying is we're being very cautious about how our SROs are actually approaching, uh, their job that they're in there. Um, and that if there are those, those situations that, uh, pop up that. You know, really sort of create that gray area that they're calling in a patrol officer. I mean, that's, that's sort of the, I mean, unless you, is, if there's anything I'm missing, feel free to throw it in there, but.
Oh, I mean, I think we've touched on all the key points, but. One aspect that's extremely important to me is just the, the pulse of our current SROs. And keeping contact open with them. And like Matt had said, I met with them this afternoon and I have complete confidence in both of them. And they committed, um, to still wanting to be in these roles, um, for all the reasons. I recognize that the environment's challenging. It's full of ambiguity. Um, and there's going to be gray area or there is gray area that we've discussed, but that's a key variable to me is that we have good people in there. Good decision-making and they're committed to those roles. Um, I think we have to continue to evaluate trends that we see, like Matt's mentioned, if. A legal opinion comes from the League of Minnesota Cities or another source, or if there's additional post board rules, um, that gets submitted, or we see an event that happens in the state. It's just continually evaluating whether or not the contract is feasible.
Little comment because I was just doing some research here, uh, because people may be watching this and similar to what you just said. Mayor about how do we raise interest and people express opinion and support? There is a website, support SROs, so S R O S dot com. That you can add your name as a citizen urging the governor to say, let you to fix the new school resource officer law. And that say this, it says the site's prepared to pay for rather Minnesota Police and Peace Officers Association. So. If you're sitting at home listening and you're struggling like we're struggling with this topic. I think that's a, a way for people to get involved. To, and there's the, there's that way. And then there's always the. Contact your local representative way as well too. So I just pointed out how kind of found that quick, easy to find and actually of interest to, to fill out too. So.
So I guess my question, I mean, again, we, we came more from an education standpoint tonight to say we're having. Our, our plan was not to, uh, to make a change unless we saw, uh, some. You know, things that we thought were very, very concerning with this. But obviously at the end of the day, you guys got to feel comfortable with this. And, you know, yeah, I completely hear what the, the mayor is saying. It's the same thing that we've, we've struggled with for. The last, how long we've been talking about this? Four weeks?
I mean, you look at the time we have in this and it's really a school issue and have they put any time into it? That, that's a concerning part of me, but a, as far as. I think the council making the decision, yes or no. That's as bad as the legislators putting that in there. I can't make that decision. That has to be the chief's. I mean, but I'm just saying for, for us. Now it's me talking, it's not the council talking, it's Mark talking, that. I, I think it's kind of crazy, but I, and I understand the other side of it. About being there and it being important and keeping that contact, keeping that present is very important. But I just think we're putting our, our people and our officers and our city in a bad spot. That's just my opinion.
The only thing I'll add, um, is we do have a good working relationship with the district, district administration, principals at, uh, various schools in the city. And. Again, if we did have to take an alternative pathway, I'm confident that together we can work through what that new reality would look like. Um, and do the best that we can to make it as, you know, seamless as possible.
I think too, that comes down to a conversation with them of whether, you know, you. Spoke to, you know, them in their advocacy for it. Have we asked? Them to advocate for change? You know, if they haven't been asked, maybe they're not going to.
That was something there that chief brought up in the first meeting with them and, and our superintendent said that she, she would put a.
So I think.
Superintendent's association to. To, to, because I think she clearly understands what, what the issue is. That's, that's been my impression.
And, and I would agree. And I just don't know what the status of that was. I know the mayor asked earlier about lobbying efforts. I don't know if that's gone anywhere. But that was part of our initial discussion with the district is I was asked, was there anything that we can do? And, you know, they had mentioned an association of superintendents. But again, I just don't have an update on that. I, I just, it was important for me to get up here and just express, we do have a good working relationship with district administration. Again, I think those, uh, both of us, we have a mutual commitment, just recognizing the importance of what SROs do.
I guess the, the one thing I will say is, I mean, this is something that Ryan and I talk about practically daily. I mean, this is, this has been something that, that we've been keeping a real close eye on. If we get to a point where, where we think that there's a liability line that's been crossed, we're probably going to have to make the decision to just. To, uh, go an alternative route pretty quickly. And so I just at least want to create expectations with you guys that if we get to that point. We'll provide, uh, communication out to you guys talking about here, you know, here is the direction that we really think we need to go and why. And here are the alternative methods that we're going to use to try to fill some of those gaps that might exist if, if, if we weren't, if we felt that we've sort of crossed that liability line. You know, we can certainly talk with, uh, Kristoff too, about if there's any things that, that are sort of. Beyond that we need to be thinking about, that maybe we aren't thinking about, but. That, that can be the expectation you can have from us is if we've really feel like we cross the line, we probably have to act pretty quickly.
Well, and, and again, it's myself talking and I hope the council turns in. If that situation comes up. You know, I'm going to respect your opinion on what you do and whatever you do with it. Uh, so. Like I said, I just, I, I, I respect the, you know, the bo- both ears. If that's a judgment you have to make that you say pull them out. We'll pull them out and then we'll be informed as long as we get notified before it's on the news, you know? But the problem is that's hard sometimes. But I mean, if, if we decide to pull them out, all you gotta do is send us an email. That's, you know, that we have it.
But there's, I mean, i- if, if we decide we've got to that point, there's going to be a good reason that we did. And so we'll be providing some reasoning of what sort of.
And I'm afraid when that happens, we're already in the hot seat. Cause otherwise it's not good.
Yeah, I, I. I, I sus- I suspect that it's, that you might start getting. I mean, I don't think anybody was expecting the post board stuff to come on Friday. I think you'll start to see more and more sort of pushes from, uh, sort of the. You know, the League of Minnesota Cities or.
Will the league do it? Because they're, they're really all indirectly the same body.
Or, you know, or Police and Peace Officers Association. I mean, there, there might be.
Is that enough to trigger it? If the post doesn't post it, who licensed it?
Depends on what the, what their recommendation that comes out. But, but it is something that we are monitoring really closely. And quite frankly, I agree with the chief that probably the best is the conversations we're having with our own SROs to say, what are you seeing? You know, what, what are the things that you're experiencing and do you have a concern? You know, that's, that's a big indicator of how, how well things are going.
Eric, anyone else's comments? I've been kind of talking too much.
Yeah, I respect the, you know, the opinions of the chief and especially the SROs, the ones who are in the front line because, you know, if they're not comfortable with that. You know, because they don't have just, uh, the community's liability, the community's financial liability, also have a personal liability involved with it too. So from that perspective, I completely respect whatever decision where they're at. And I understand this ambiguity is not healthy at all. Um, but if they're not comfortable, you know, I respect wherever they are that, you know, that's, you know. And, you know, any decision we make as a community, we've got to be. Doing the right thing for all of us. And right now it's very gray. So, but certainly I respect their decision. If it's, if they're not comfortable, then that's where we are.
Your thoughts or is it?
I, I would agree with that, that the, you know, chief and the SROs are the experts. As far as what they're comfortable with and, you know, they're acting in their duties every day. I think that's important to lean into. To what you guys are thinking, feeling, experiencing firsthand. And if that changes. Personally, you have my support, so. I agree. You know, I think about, you know, what are, what are. Statement is as Chaska PD, you know, serve and protect. And, and that falls in line with that. I understand the liability risks and I lean on you to know when, you know, to stay or when we need to make changes, but. Really at the end of the day, I mean, it comes down to what our, what our mission is, right? What we're there for. So.
I, I, you know, I'm never an expert on many things in my life, and so I lean on that. Topic to the news all over. You know, I will be a glass half full person most of my life and hope that clarity gets provided and. People speak up and things change, but. Understand that if we have to get that decision, just inform us and keep us in the loop.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate your time and chief, thank you for putting this together.
Thanks, chief.
You're fine. Thank you.
Putting it there, but I just, I don't know.
I mean, the situation stinks. I mean, it's just, it's just a terrible situation because. Well, it's, i- i- it's just. Everybody wants to do the right thing and it feels tough to do the right thing.
On our side.
On our side, yeah.
It's the, we're the fallout of what happened and now, because I get it. We have a, you know, I believe that our SROs have a great. Rapport with the students there. I mean. You see them when you, when they're out and about and the kids around them, they're all talking to them and high fiving them and.
I was actually asking Will about that because he, he's in the high school now. And I said, you know, what do you, what do you think the SRO? He goes, oh yeah, Trent's, Trent's always talking with every. Everybody's joking around with them and stuff. I mean. I told Trent that today when I saw him out in the parking lot, these people, these SROs are having an impact, a positive impact on these kids, uh, within the, the school. And. You know, so it's, it, it's a shame.
Right. Um, anyone else under visitor presentation? I got one thing I want to do though. We have a new communication coordinator and I'm going to make her come up here. Miss Krista and, and just let everyone know, uh, a little bit about your new position.
Yeah. So I'm the new communications coordinator for the city, um, formerly the event center supervisor for almost five years. This position opened up and I made the pivot. Um, really excited to be working in this new role and be helping everyone out in the city.
And for anyone that's unclear, Kevin now has moved up and I still don't know his new title. It's Kevin's new title.
Engagement.
Community engagement coordinator, which is what Kevin's kind of been doing. And now Krista is going to be able to take some of Kevin's load off, help with the social media, help with the communications pieces. And let Kevin go out and be in the public where he really does an awesome job. So. So thanks and welcome. I thought I, I better get you out in front of everybody. So everybody knows who we are. Perfect. Thank you.
Congrats.
Kevin, do we have anybody, uh, online?
No one online.
Okay. All right. Uh. That concludes that. All right. Uh, next is item six, approving previous meeting minutes. That is from the eight, 21, 23 council meeting. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by council member Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post save sign. Carrie's next is item seven.
Sorry, I didn't vote. I was, yeah, yes, I was missing. So I voted aye to that as well. I don't know if I just. Someone watches the video, they'll notice I didn't say anything, so.
That's a five oh vote.
That sounded like lights.
All right, moves us to consent. Are you two done?
Yes.
We're on item seven, which is. We're on item seven, which is consent items, and these are items that don't necessarily need a conversation, but always in all can be moved at any point for a conversation. So with that, is there anyone that has a comment, question or concern about consent items? I would just like to make one comment. I'm very happy to see that we have the the final bids for that sewer project that we've been working on, it seems like forever. And this is the final stage of it. And very happy to see that the bids came in very favorable.
Bids were incredible.
Incredibly favorable, which might be good signs for a building we might be building that's coming up next. So very happy to see that and and I I think that maybe is a sign of a little bit of what we might hopefully see in the future. I mean,
You know, I will say, yeah, we have we have RJM contracting or construction who is acting as sort of our construction manager as part of the whole process with safety building. And I asked him the question last week is what are they seeing for you know, sort of a bidding environment? And forever it was going up. And what they're seeing now is it's really stabilizing that they're just not seeing those increases in construction prices like they were before. Now, this is actually lower than what we expected, so.
Quite a bit lower.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there anyone else? Otherwise that entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Did I do it already?
No, I do.
Okay.
I was second, I'm paying attention.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Gra. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post save sign. Did you vote this time? Carrie's. All right. Next, we move on to action items and I was thinking about adding another item that we should maybe I was thinking we should talk a little more about SROs or something, but I would like to see if we could, what your thoughts are about moving item B to item first off so that we songs are here.
How do you guys feel about that?
Yeah.
Sure, they're, I'm sure they're not gonna.
You want to spend another hour and a half before you get up? Or would you like to get going now? All right. All right. Does council have a problem if we move B to P first off? Yeah, no?
That's fine.
Okay. Well, I didn't know. Nobody moved ahead. I was waiting for a nod. All right. So we're going to start with AP Adopt Resolution twenty twenty three dash seventy seven, approving concept plan for public safety.
Mayor and council, this is an item coming from the planning commission and actually the park board to take a look at this as well. This is the first stage in the formal planning process for our public safety facility, which is a unified being proposed as unified facility for our police and fire upon the current fire station site. And obviously, as we've talked about and we'll talk about during our our budget process next is is really sort of the first phase of our building improvement program. So I'll turn this over to Liz, who's going to go through a presentation. And then we do have our architects from C and H are here to be able to go through and answer any detailed questions.
Matt, thank you, council members and Mr. Mayor. We have a concept plan in front of us this evening for the project known as the Public Safety Facility being proposed by the city of Chaska, so ourselves. So the site in question is highlighted in orange on the above aerial. So it involves the existing fire station site as well as the existing Meadow Park site. This is located kind of in the the center of the city off of Engler Boulevard and is kind of situated around mostly residential, kind of on the south side and west sides, and then commercial on the east side. So as Matt mentioned, this kind of dates back to twenty twenty one, when the strategic plan was adopted by yourselves. There were visionary outcomes that were defined as a part of that strategic plan. One of them really highlights having quality city facilities within the community that are adequate, both in meeting the growth and highlighting community pride for the city. So it was supposed to be this facility that's in question tonight was a part of a two-year implement implementation plan. So this year is kind of that year to be looking at this facility. So a couple public engagement efforts have occurred before this concept plan was submitted with the city. On July twenty sixth, the city conducted an open house or a neighborhood meeting at the fire station to allow residents and people within five hundred feet of the subject property to come and learn about the project, provide any comments and questions, concerns, the like. Another effort was made during River City Days. The city booth was put up between July twenty eighth and the thirtieth, and the main project highlighted during that time was the Public Safety Facility. So anyone who is interested in learning more, that was another opportunity for them to be involved or to learn more. So some of the comments that were received out of that process pertain to the look of the security funds that aligns the police parking lot. Some residents that about the southern side of the site really wanted to see a balance of trees and grass on the south berm that we'll we'll see in some later exhibits. There were some questions and concerns on the location of the park, trail maintenance, the amount of green space surrounding the park, and then access to the trails during construction. So the site is about nine acres in size. It's two separate lots, one that contains the fire station and one that contains Meadow Park. So each of those lots are zoned a little bit different from each other. The fire station is public buildings and then the playground site is owned, planned, multi-use district for park space. The fire station is approximately twenty three thousand square feet in size today. It's also a two-story building. As you look at it, there is a berm that aligns the south side of the site between the parking lot and the residential to the south that contains a mature cluster of trees on top of it. Access today comes from Engler Boulevard or the county road with three separate points of access, providing full circulation around the parking lot as well as the large access for the apparatus base for the fire trucks. Meadow Park is situated on the west side of the site and as you see in this drawing, and then pedestrian trails come from the residential neighborhoods to the south and on the west side that connect into the park and into the overall fire station site. So the request this evening is for a concept plan for the construction of the new public safety facility, which would include both the fire and police departments to be located in this new building. It would total approximately ninety eight thousand square feet in size, which includes both the underground level and the small second story level as well. And as a part of the construction and kind of new site layout, the park area Meadow Park will have to be revised as a part of that overall site plan initiative. So this is the concept plan on this slide here showing the building kind of in the center of the site, which makes up kind of the blue and red portions that are shown here. I'm going to start with access though. So the concept plan that we're showing today shows four separate access points into the site. The western access would act as the main public point of access to the public parking lot and access to the main entry of the building, which would be on the west side there. Other firefighter and fire department parking would also occur off of that west access and provide kind of that full-time fire department parking for the full-time staff in that department. That access will also be a secondary access to the police parking on the south side of the site. The two internal access points will be those wider access points for the fire apparatus base, so for fire trucks to exit and return to the site. And then lastly, that easterly access will be the main kind of emergency access for police and fire to use. So this wouldn't be a public access use at all. All of that would happen on the west side.
Let's just be labeled. Emergency vehicles only, then? Is that what your intentions are there?
Yeah, there's going to have to be a level of signage out there to make that more clear.
Oh, you said that that's a police and fire access. Isn't isn't that gated off to get back to the police site?
I, it is on the south side here. So the fence would start on kind of the midpoint.
So it'd be only fire access, really?
Access?
Yeah.
Oh, it would, it would still act as both the police and fire. So police would still be able to get down to their site there and out.
That's a gate that there would be electronic gate?
It's a
Oh, okay.
Gate. Yeah.
I thought it was fenced off. All right, sorry.
Building is kind of a C-shaped or U-shaped building. And in terms of a footprint and how much that takes up, it's about sixty four thousand square feet just in building footprint. But when you add the underground and the upper levels, it's about ninety eight thousand square feet total. So the colors on this building layout indicate where the fire and the police locate in the building. So the fire would kind of take up that northern half of the building. The police would take up the southern half. This turquoise color indicates where public functions or public area is within the building. So that would be the lobby space. And there's also a training area or a meeting room within the the center of the building for meetings to occur on site. And then also a history node here that would present fire history and the old Studebagger vehicle as well. In terms of parking, one hundred and seventy five stalls are shown on this site plan. So that is the total for kind of the full build out of the parking lot. Right now, we have about one hundred and forty one stalls that would be constructed at initial construction of the building and the site, but there would be thirty four proof of parking stalls that are shown in gray on the site plan that would allow for future growth should either the fire department or police department need it. And all the numbers were kind of based on the worst case scenario or the largest shifts that both departments experience during the week, as well as adding on kind of this meeting room function here. Those numbers were based off of those components. And then lastly, which will also show better in a landscape plan, but there is a berm proposed on the south side here. So that will have to be revised with the overall new site plan that's proposed here. It will will be approximately five feet tall and then also incorporates some landscaping on top of that. We did do some revisions to it between the concept or the neighborhood meeting up until now, just to kind of lighten the amount of vegetation that was on the the backside here, just in response to some of the comments received from the residents on the south side. So that's showing in in this exhibit here also shows kind of a conceptual landscape layout for the site as well as what that comparison looks like today with the southern berm there and what the changes would look like with the new berm and parking lot situated back there. And then conceptually showing kind of an opening for where Meadow Park would go as well as some realignment of the trails and how that connects into the overall site. So the intention here was to provide that kind of reinforced connection between the building and the park so that people who visit the park feel connected to the public safety building.
So what's the berm? Area is at the playground?
Here? We're kind of leaving that open right now in terms of what's going to happen there. Usually what the process entails is as a part of the concept and the three-step process with the city, the the edges of the park would really get defined during that time. But the park and Recreation Commission and Park Department wouldn't hold their own public engagement period with the neighborhood to start programming the park and what actually goes in there. So that's.
Bean shaped area, I'll call it. Sort of a lima bean, maybe. Kidney bean, little kidney, okay. I think the way to interpret that is that's generally the programmable space, right? So is it, is it play field or is it, you know, an area for a play set or or whatever? Maybe, you know, one half is the slide, you know, the equipment and another half is an area for grassy play.
Go on a kidney bean just somewhere.
Somewhere in there, right? And then that would leave ample space to also have, you know, grassy play field area as well.
Why are we not including? And I, the reason I'm kind of going, I I had a conversation at the open house with the chief about it. Why aren't we utilizing more of that open space going up toward Engler Boulevard? That just sits empty. Why wouldn't we? I I get it. You're getting closer to the road, but there's still a lot of room there.
Playground.
At this stage.
No, I'm not saying that, but why wouldn't that be all part of the kidney beef?
Yeah, I I guess at this stage, mayor, I would with this being a concept plan, recognize that there's, you know, this isn't considering grading, this isn't considering the full scope of of stormwater pounding and that kind of stuff. And so that'll get baked into that preliminary and the area will get refined a little bit more. I think, you know, along with what you're suggesting, the idea here is that, you know, to the extent that we can maximize playable space in balance with everything else that is achieved on the site, you know, that's that's going to be the goal.
Kind of the design of the building. Right now, we're planning to incorporate predominantly Chaska brick within the building, which is consistent with what we've done with other civic buildings in town here. Also introducing some type of stone masonry to accent the brick, metal paneling and glass as well. So really, the intention and our the architect firm that we're working with are doing a really good job of kind of analyzing again, those elements that you see both in contemporary buildings in the city as well as historic buildings that have been a part of the the fabric of the city. So there is an old fire station photo here on the top right that we've really tried to pull from in terms of some of the elements that you see on the building. But also try to balance both the historic and this being an overall contemporary building as a part of the overall look. But the intent again is to provide some consistency between both what you've seen in other civic buildings, but also a tie into kind of what we know about the history of the fire department. Just a couple of views into the site. These two images are coming from the south side of the site. So looking mainly from the residential side into the security fencing around the police parking lot. So as you can see, the main part of the building on the south side here really resembles a one-story building and that was intentional again with the residential to the south and trying to be sensitive to the massing that they're seeing on the south side here. And then.
What kind of fencing will that be?
Be a decorative eight-foot aluminum fence, more than likely. So like a black.
So it'll be aluminum, not steel? Okay. I just worry if it was steel, you can't ever fix, clean them up when they start rusting and.
Sure. Yeah, I think we're still trying to narrow down exactly what spec, but the intention right now is it'll be a some type of black aluminum decorative fencing. And then just a couple of views more so on the front side of the building. So the top image there is looking from the northwest or from Engler Boulevard as you're heading west on the roadway. You can see the the front entrance there and then the corner of the building along that front edge. The middle perspective provides that look at the main entrance of the building and primarily what the police department occupies kind of on the right-hand side there. You get that large, prominent, two-story space and atrium-like space, just to pronounce the the main entry there. And then the bottom image is looking south off of Engler Boulevard. So this is basically the fire department side of the building and where the apparatus. So this is, uh, basically the fire department's side of the building and where the apparatus base would exit out to, onto, uh, Engler Boulevard. Uh, so as you can see, um, there are some elements in there, uh, some arching details within the brick, other brick detail, which is hard to see on, um, this slide here, uh, but, uh, elements that are being brought in that are kind of reminisce of, uh, the old fire station building, but also provide a little bit more contemporary ways, um, to bring in detailing. Um, just wanted to give a summary of, uh, the meeting that the Park and Recreation Commission had on September twelfth. Uh, so they'd also looked at the concept plan and provided some feedback, uh, related to what was shown. Um, overall, they were supportive of, uh, what was shown on the concept plan regarding the park plan, um, access to playground and trails, uh, they want those to remain open as long as possible throughout the construction. Um, they had a preference to, um, have underground storage tanks to preserve the si- size of the park as much as possible. Um, cause as you add to, uh, the above-ground pond, ponding, it starts to, uh, bleed into the site a little bit more. Uh, but they did note that if, uh, expansion to the ponding, uh, was needed and loss of, uh, green space was a result, um, that they recommended to use, um, some of the cost savings of going that method towards putting in a larger themed, uh, playground with shelter and tables, um, and consideration for rubberized playground surface versus wood chips to provide more of that lost flat surface, um, from the green space. Um, further evaluation of the parking lot design to see if there's additional green space that could be added to the park area. Um, so looking at if there are ways to, uh, modify the parking lot, um, immediately adjacent to the park, um, to make way for a little bit more green space. Um, and then just overall looking at the parking, um, plan for police and other uses to see again if there's ways to add more green space, um, to the overall site. Um, so a couple of things to work on for preliminary, um, is really defining the stormwater design, uh, for the site, uh, but also coordinating, uh, with Parks and Recreation Commission on Meadow Park. Um, and those kind of go hand in hand, um, in terms of, um, how the stormwater affects the overall green space on the site. Um, I will say that we have been actively, um, in, uh, communication about some alternatives of looking at the site to see where we can maybe, um, add additional green space. So that is something that we are actively working on, um, at the city level to see how we can continue to enhance the site plan. Uh, so in conclusion, um, we are asking to make a motion this evening to adopt Resolution Number twenty-two-three dash seventy-seven, which is approving the concept plan, uh, for the public safety facility and then based on the conditions that are listed within that. Happy to answer any questions, otherwise we, we do have many people in the room who can help answer questions too.
Questions anyone?
We've seen a lot of this before. I do not currently have any questions. Just to be clear that we've seen them before.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, I've seen it before and, yeah, I love, love the overall concept. Um, I did have one small question. So I know that we had like a, a very strong emphasis on like the firefighter heritage with like the, you know, like the, you know, the old fire, um, engines and stuff that we, you know, we've kept over the years, right? You know, they're historic, right? How come there's not something like that on the police side or is there?
We don't have any stuff to put in there.
Well, I mean, I'm kind of wondering, but over.
Yeah, so there is gonna be, um, I mean, we don't, the police department doesn't have a vehicle and so there's nothing like that, but one of the things that's gonna be, uh, looked at is, um, some heritage things from, from more artifact type, type of things that would be inside that sort of great hallway that would be in there.
This is my fourth place arrest and search explorer award.
We'll, we'll put that at the top of the.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, the other thing is, the other thing that we talked about actually last week was on, uh, sort of the monument, uh, walls coming in is to, to be able to add the names of all the police officers that have served in the city of Chaska through its history. So, I, yeah, it's, uh, the fire department definitely is, has, uh, got the legs up on the artifact preservation.
Well, this is one of those things you think ahead, it's like at some point, you know, if you don't keep something for the future, you're not gonna have anything that's, you know, and but in the meantime, it's kind of like you got, you don't want to collect just old stuff, right? You know, so, but, you know, it's nice to kind of acknowledge that heritage because the police department is one of the oldest and, you know, this part of the, the cities. And it's, you know, there's a, there's a heritage there to be preserved.
I do know that that's something that Chief Cyber has talked about during the process is having something that's gonna talk about the history of the department in there too. So, I can tell you when we visited Mount Prospect, Illinois, when we were, uh, station conference, they were the police department that the Blues Brothers car was from. And there they had like an actual Blues Brothers car, so. So different stations view heritage differently.
Thanks.
Yep.
Not so much a question as much as a comment, just based on reading like the neighborhood notes and just things of that nature. I know it's still concept, but it sounds like kind of an overwhelming response by the area neighbors is to make sure that the playground park side stays on the south.
South side?
South side.
Yeah, that's, that's something that we're, we've actually talked quite a bit about. Um, you know, I know as the park board looked at it, one of the concerns that they had is that if you put the open sort of playgrounds on the north-hand side, that, um.
Balls being kicked.
The ball being kicked out into there where if you have the playground on the north side, it's sort of confined area. So they actually expressed some concerns, uh, uh, about that. So I think it's, I'm not saying we've come up with a, a decision, but I think it's one of the things that we'll have to end up talking about during a, another neighborhood meeting.
Yeah, I think maybe, I don't, I mean, again, it's so early, but that's very true, but I think to, anything that goes kind of closer to the road, we just need to be like obviously strategic about landscaping, but not blocking sightlines for emergency vehicles too. So obviously it's gotta be something that's really thoughtful and well thought out, like pickleball courts.
Pickleball courts up enough. Get that out of the way.
Oh, you're fitting pickleball courts.
A lot of room, couple pickleball courts, so just think of the load that would take off.
Yes, on a, on a personal note, I used to would walk over to that park with my son as a, as a, when he was a toddler. And, uh, it's such a fun and unique playground, although I, I'm sure that no one will miss because it was constantly muddy in the middle of that playground. I don't know, like the filtration of it was not, not exactly, not exactly the best. It was, it was fun and unique. It was like a little mud pit in the middle there, but, um, we'll definitely miss that unique playground. But, uh, this is very exciting. Absolutely, absolutely.
The war.
So there, there was like, especially because like around that area, there's the little, uh, like a little tightrope beam thing, so I mean, the, the chances of you falling into the muddy area were increasingly high. So it's kind of fun.
Did he make it through or not?
My son was too timid to even go on any such things. It was me, all me.
Did you get money?
Absolutely. So.
Um.
But no, it's very exciting nonetheless.
Yeah, my grandkids always call it, can we go to the, the fire park? Fire park, that's what they call it, so.
Have to be mistaken, the pink park.
Pink.
Remember when the fire equipment down here used to be pink?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Nobody remembers that?
It was distinctly red when I played at that park.
Yeah, the sun got to it after a while.
Um, you guys want to make any comments? You're free to, uh, it sounds like we're kind of getting off track up here, but you're free to line up and say something if you'd like, or how the process is going, we on track? We have enough, or I mean, are we allowing enough square footage for the future? I mean, those are all questions that I'll just blank.
I just want to comment that the, uh, staff have been very helpful and, and, and very engaged in this process. I think it's been going very well. I've been getting good feedback and we're moving along, uh, and really excited about where it's headed. So, no, everything's going well.
Oh, they have enough room, I mean, they do a lot of stuff around the back of the station, uh, do they, are they feeling they got enough room to do that and where they do the car extracations? And we're part of the, we're part of the, um, training schedule or of the new recruits that they float around and I, I mean, I see spaces, but I just don't know if they're available.
Yeah, um, we've been putting a lot of attention in, into training and that's certainly something that we're very familiar with. Uh, the, uh, areas in the back, the building from the training tower over, we're providing the, the full hundred, uh, feet of, of training distance that we typically would start with, you know, and sometimes have gotten smaller. Extrication has a, a dedicated spot, um, you know, off to the side, be, you know, actually within the, um, police fence area so that it's also a bit more safe because it's one of the things we look at it. Car partially torn apart, it's not, uh, something you want to play around. Um, but yeah, it, it has been a lot of focus on, on, on training, but.
Good. Alright, thank you. Alright, anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I was just gonna say. I think it's been really well thought out. I think the nice thing is just the, like you had mentioned, just listening and addressing and planning and designing for both the specific needs of our fire department, but also our police department and the, they're, they can be similar and they can be vastly different. So it's, you know, um, complicated in a good way, but I think it's, it's really, it's a beautiful looking building and I think it, it does address future growth by the way that it's designed, but it's gonna look very pleasing and not looming as a public safety campus.
Exciting to see it. Right, any other comments? Otherwise I'd be, be looking for a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two-three dash seventy-nine approving the proposed. Nope, twenty, twenty-three, I'm in the wrong order again, approving the concept plan for public safety.
Absolutely.
So a motion by Councilor Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatfield. Again, I'll try this to get it right this time, adopt Resolution twenty-two-three dash seventy-seven, proving the concept plan for a public safety building. Discussion. Yeah, and, uh, Councilor Hatfield talked about, we've seen a lot of those proposals, we're not quickly jumping over it. So, um, because it's our building, so it's gonna go through the same process, it's a three-step process. Liz didn't put that slide up that we're in only in step one, but this is only step one, so we'll be back to the council a number of times for, uh, anyone that's watching. So we're following the same concept or same plans that we would for any other building. Uh, we're not doing anything different because it's a city building, so. Alright, uh, any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That's carries, thanks for being here.
Thanks guys.
Thank you. Alright, uh, next is that made a adopt Resolution twenty-two-three dash seventy-nine adopting proposed twenty-two-four maximum property tax levy.
Mayor and council member, uh, under the, uh, uh, state, uh, property tax guidelines, uh, one of the things that cities have to do, all local governments have to do before, uh, we go through and set up final levies, we set up plenary levy, uh, by the end of September. The purpose of the plenary levy, is that a preview of, and we yawned through my whole presentation? Alright, um, the, uh, the plenary levy is set up at the end of September with the purpose of, uh, being able to give that information to the county, it's sent out to, uh, property owners, uh, in their property tax statements that they receive, their truth and taxation statements. Both indicates what is the, uh, tax levy that's being proposed by each jurisdiction and what impact would it have on their, uh, property and then also, uh, listing the date that the, uh, uh, truth and taxation would, uh, hearing would be held, which this year is on December fourth. So this is really sort of the first step in the process. This is only with our general fund. Obviously we still have to go through enterprise funds of electric and water and sewer and all that, but this is just focused on our tax levy supported, um, services that we receive. So, um, next slide Alex. Alright, um, so discussion items from last year's budget process and these are, are pertinent because, uh, they're very similar to what this year's, uh, uh, are very little change on the discussion items. First of all, it's a continuation, uh, continued utilization of our tax levy policy, which is limit our tax levy growth to capture only new growth in the community, but also any expenditure infla- uh, inflation that we're actually experiencing. And then we'd only expand the levy beyond that point if there was actually a new program that's being, uh, influenced. So for instance, like our building program or, or staffing program. Uh, we want to continue implementation of our million-dollar capital asset maintenance plan, our camp plan, which is really sort of trying to keep, uh, in good shape, the, the different assets that we have within our community. Um, reinstituting our, last year we talked about reinstituting our staffing study. Actually, as we go into twenty-four, this is the last year of implementing that staffing study. And then implementation of our building improvement, uh, program, uh, is, uh, another we'll talk about. And then, uh, back last year, we did talk about, uh, the importance of continuing to build our general fund reserve balance. Um, we have kept in place, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and what we're proposing for twenty-four, uh, budgeting three hundred thousand dollars, uh, a year as just reserve dollars. Uh, this, we're really, as we talked about, uh, in the past, it's really trying to make sure that we do the things to keep our bond rating, uh, uh, that we have. Uh, and we've seen some real success in this over the last few years, um, as you'll see in this, we, you know, we have, uh, cash balances that, uh, you know, growing from about two-point-four million to our cash balance in two thousand twenty-two, which is our last audited year of five-point-five, uh, billion dollars. So we've continued to, to see that grow in the general fund. Uh, next slide, um, as far as our budget objectives, um, these are ones that, um, are, are the things that we really focus on as we're putting together the, the budget, uh, the budget itself and the recommendations that we make. Uh, so first of all, supporting budgeting programs that help Chaska strengthen its mission of being the best small town in Minnesota. Uh, we've already talked about using our, uh, existing levy policy, uh, maintain existing high-quality services, uh, fully fund the maintenance and replacement, uh, financing of our vehicles, equipment and physical assets on a regular schedule so that we make sure that we, uh, have sustainability of the investments we've already made. Uh, fund new programs only after existing necessary programs are funding. Uh, budget utilizing a plan that avoids drawdown of our city's general fund reserves, uh, fully fund the levy needs of our street reconstruction program and then develop a long-term budget plan that's sustainable from a resource perspective, really to support the level of services that our residents expect in the community. Next slider, uh, I actually can slip to the next one, budget environment. So, um, first thing to talk about with budget environment, um, you know, one thing to, to, to start with is really the impacts of COVID in the general fund have really lessened over the last couple of years. We still have, uh, we still see some recovery that's, uh, uh, occurring in the community center, our recreational funds, a curling center, as I think we saw during the, uh, uh, the audit, uh, process uh, uh, a few weeks ago is really returned to near, near normal. And, uh, uh, so we're really sort of moving beyond through those, the, the COVID impacts that we've seen. Um, we continue to see significant growth in our community and I had, uh, Nate pull this number today because it absolutely still just boggles my mind. Uh, but we've, we're currently at about two-point-five million dollars in building permit activity this year. Um, to put that in perspective, we budgeted one-point-one million. Um, we've seen a lot of growth, uh, in the, the community over, uh, over the course of the year and we're still seeing those, uh, permits being, uh, pulled. We do think as we move into next year that, uh, it's probably likely that it's gonna be more, I think our billing official said it best, that it's probably likely that it's gonna be more of an average, uh, year, uh, that we see and that can be interest rates, uh, leading to that. Uh, we've seen some, uh, slowdown, uh, because of that, uh, but we're gonna continue to see residential growth. Uh, we have a few industrial buildings are ready to go, you know, uh, question of whether or not they'll actually move forward next year with building. I do not think we're gonna see, uh, another year like we've seen this year, but quite frankly, the last three years, uh, as you see when we get into building permits. Have I said that we won't see it?
I said, well, you just said that we've had a great year and didn't think we'd get beyond that and now here we are beyond it again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm naturally a conservative person, so I, I, two points, I, I just don't see.
I think, uh,
I think, uh, a good indicator, like, building permits sort of lag the planning pipeline, right? Projects come through the planning pipeline first, then they're, then they're getting built. So what we're seeing built this year was approved last year. If you compare the planning caseload, um, this year versus last year, it's, it's quite a bit different now.
It's not that we aren't seeing things, it's just that we're not seeing them at the pace that we were seeing them before. So I'll be talking a little bit about that and sort of how we plan to sort of approach that this year. Cause one of the things that, one of the things that's sort of a challenge, and, and I've been working with Noel on this, is that we've collected building permits, you know, actually collected the revenue in two thousand twenty-three, but the work is actually, most of the work that we have to do is going to be in two thousand twenty-four. And so, uh, you know, we are going to be looking at some of that. You know, by the end of the year, it could be close to three million dollars and dedicating that towards specifically the building permit activity for, uh, two thousand twenty-four. Because, you know, if we're going to be performing the work next year, we really need to have something that's dedicated for when we're actually performing the work. So that's going to be a strategy that we, we use this year. Um, and then we've seen new growth in the community and the strong real estate market increase our taxable market values. And this has really been over the last, uh, thirty-six months. Uh, next slide. So as far as our budget environmental factors, I mean, I think, you know, one of the things that, uh, you know, you can see two thousand seventeen through twenty-three, I mean, we've seen some pretty, uh, some pretty good growth, uh, within our, our community. Uh, some of it is, uh, has been because of, of new growth, actually this last year. Uh, so this would have been, uh, market values that would have been in place, put in place last year. Uh, we've actually seen the highest, uh, percentage of new growth, uh, in the community. For, for quite some time, we saw three point two four percent increase in new growth, uh, compared to eight point one eight percent overall growth. Now, if you remember last year, one of the real, uh, I guess you call it issue that, that pop up last year was that we saw the residential market change so quickly. And, and increase so much that we saw some people seeing twenty, twenty-plus percent increases in their, uh, residential market values. We are not seeing that this year. Um, that, uh, you know, that came as sort of a one-time we're not seeing that type of, of increase like we did last year.
As a pure dollar on your taxes, that's a big issue. I mean, we work in percents, right? But I remember a lot of the conversation last year being how much dollar wise it went up and some of that, actually most of that, a lot of that was solely connected that your house is now worth a lot more and that percentage is a lot bigger dollar.
Yeah.
And that was a big sticker shock for everyone, including everyone up here, right? You kind of sound like you only really want your house to be really valuable when you're selling.
That is true.
Otherwise, it's like people.
You know, the one, the one thing, i- it really sort of impacts more how the, how the taxes are distributed is, or, because the one thing that having a real high, uh, market value increased did is it actually, um, it actually lowered our tax rate. And so it can have sort of that impact to lowering the tax rate. So, um, that's why, uh, you know, the, the decisions that are made as far as what programs we're going to be adding have a lot more impact overall on what act people actually pay. Um, because higher market values can, can also decrease tax rate. So it's a hard concept to, to explain, but you will see that, uh, when we go forward, I'll show you what the, the actual impacts are for, uh, for proposal for next year. Uh, next slide. So, uh, a couple of things to, to take into consideration. Uh, first of all, we will consent, continue to see zero dollars in our local government aid for two thousand twenty-four. Although, as we talked about during our work sessions, there are two pieces of, of, um, not local government aid, but aid that are, is coming from the state that will come to the city. Uh, one at the end of two thousand twenty-four, which is the public safety aid. And then we will have affordable housing state aid that's going to come each year. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, later.
Are talking, is that the congressionally directed?
No, I think, no, these are state legislative, uh, 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 changes that, uh, were made. Building permits, again, over the last two, at, I should say, three years, because now we can see what is happening this year. I've been very steady. Uh, we're seeing growth in all sectors, uh, including new single-family, industrial, uh, and commercial projects. And again, w- we, we don't expect that it's going to be as high, uh, of amount of development in two thousand twenty-four that we're seeing in two thousand twenty-three. Just for the reasons that, that Nate talked about is that we can see that through our planning applications going through. It's not saying that nothing's going to happen, um, but we do, do not expect it to, to be at the same levels that it's going to, that was this year. But quite frankly, this year was off the charts, uh, as far as the, the amount of building activity that we saw.
Proposed, uh, industrial park, but that's still probably three years away.
Yeah, I mean, by the time, I would be shocked if they could be ready and be able to put in anything. I mean, it's possible they could go through and start putting in infrastructure next year because we will have our sewer project that's up there. Uh, they continue to, to talk to us. I think it's much more likely that you would see, um, the, uh, site that's already ready, uh, up on the north side, but, uh, uh, the Frye property. I think it'd be much more likely that you'd see that move forward as far as an actual building than it would be the stuff down at, at forty-four and two twelve. Um, so this is, uh, uh, oh, next slide. Uh, this is a breakdown of our market values, uh, for payable two thousand twenty-four. I think the, the thing to point out, um, uh, over in the very right-hand column, our overall increase was eight point one eight percent, uh, in our total, uh, increase in market values in the community. Uh, three point two four percent of that was from new construction. Uh, as you look at the residential market, so we saw six point two one percent increase. Actually, the majority of that actually came from new construction, not from market change. So the market change was only about two point seven five percent. Again, compare that to last year where it was over twenty percent that people were seeing for, for that. Uh, commercial industrial is definitely seeing increase both, uh, in, uh, increase in the valuation of existing properties, but also new construction. And some of that has been because we've seen some of the building of our, of our industrial buildings because there's been a higher demand for it, at least in the last couple of years, because there hasn't been product to the east of us, uh, for, for people to, uh, to be able to move into. Our apartments have increased pretty dramatically, and this is really based on sort of a real high demand, uh, right now for, uh, apartments. I mean, you know, we have about six hundred units being built right now, uh, in the community. Uh, so, uh, there definitely was a, a higher demand, uh, for the apartments. And then we did see the egg property is sort of future development property that go down a little bit. Uh, I think that sort of reflects that there's maybe a little less, uh, uh, demand for sort of that, uh, new growth, uh, now. And that you're seeing some of those land prices come down, which eventually turns itself into seeing more development come. You know, as prices get themselves down to, to be able to a- address interest rate, uh, changes that people are seeing.
I guess I would have thought that there would have been a bigger difference between twenty-two and twenty-three on the, on the apartments. But I don't know when permits are pulled or, uh, all of them may create.
Oh, you, you won't see those come on. You'll, so the two apartments up in Clover Ridge will get evaluated on July first of next year, which will be for taxes payable twenty-five. So.
This isn't reflecting that.
This is not reflecting that. You might see a little bit of reflection in these, uh, just because they had some building, but most of that valuation is actually going to come and be effective for taxes payable twenty-five. Next slide, please. Uh, this is a breakdown of, uh, what we see for our apartments, ag, residential and commercial industrial. You can see obviously the, the vast majority of what we see in the community is, uh, residential. But we have a pretty healthy, uh, commercial industrial, uh, sector, uh, with, uh, nine percent, uh, of our, um, uh, community with a commercial industrial. And then apartments is nine percent. The only thing that's changed from this chart from last year to this year is actually apartments have gone up, as far as the market value, um, distributions by, uh, two percent with residential going down by two percent. So that sort of represents that there is a little, uh, a little bit higher demand, uh, for apartment units now.
It just seems like apartment, you know, if I look about across the city, there's a lot of apartments. It just seems nine percent, just seems kind of crazy. Is what it is.
Yeah. Total market values, next slide. So you can see our total market values. Again, we're seeing an eight point one eight percent increase, uh, for taxes payable for next year. Three point two four percent of that is new growth. Again, significantly less than the twenty-two point three five percent that we saw in two thousand twenty-two for this year's taxes payable. As we project into the future, we project, uh, from a budgeting perspective, a two percent increase. That has not been reflective of what we've actually seen. We do this more from a, uh, trying to be conservative about what we're actually planning for in the future. You know, last year was a real anomaly and, you know, we saw, you know, well, first of all, we think, uh, two percent is conservative because if you actually look at the, um, last five years, we've seen an average of twenty-one point six five percent increase in, in market values. But, uh, with that being said, um, you know, the, you know, we have to keep in mind that last year was an anomaly. We saw a twenty-two percent increase. You know, that's why the number went from, uh, eight point eight percent in two thousand twenty-two to twenty-one point six five in two thousand twenty-three. Most years, we're not going to see that. So, um, I, I don't think we're going to continue to see an average of over twenty percent for market value increase in the community. But I do think, uh, you know, we've been pretty consistent with, with about a seven to eight percent increase in market value in the community for quite some time now. Uh, next slide. Uh, I had mentioned this before, this is our new construction valuation growth. And you can see, uh, every year we've seen some, but two thousand twenty-three is, um, the largest, uh, new growth, uh, new construction value increase that we've seen, uh, over the last decade or decade plus. And I, you know, I've, I've said this in the past, one of the reasons I put this out here is I think it's always important to remember that as we're setting our levy, we need to make sure that we're capturing this new growth so that the new people in the community are actually contributing their market values towards, a- a- and contributing their resources towards our overall, uh, service levels. So, um, you know, even back in, in, in the years that we saw, you know, uh, recession back in two thousand nine, ten, eleven, we still saw new growth in the community, even though, um, even though it was much less than it is now. Uh, next slide. Uh, local government aid, you know, I, I put,
Talk about it.
I, I put it in here because I think one thing that's really important, and I think we just can't forget it. And to help understand, uh, why it is that we're having to deal with things like, uh, like staffing programs and stuff is when we lost our local government aid, uh, back in the two thousand, well, we completely lost it by about two thousand, you know, we, we, we went in half by like, uh, two thousand five. And I think it's important to illustrate that we did not levy for this new, for this loss of local government aid when it happened. We allowed new construction to basically, uh, fill, or, or new market value to basically build this up. And so, you know, this, you know, theoretically, um, now we sort of structure it so that that new growth in the community is, is really sort of put towards supporting that new growth, not making up for lost revenue that, that was there before. And so, you know, over the course from two thousand three forward into, you know, the two thousand ten time period, you know, we basically lost a million dollars of, of revenue that we didn't have before, or that we had before. And, um, wi- without reliving it, you know, that's, that's some of the things that we've had to do over time to, to build up our camp program, uh, to build up our staffing program, things like that. I, I, you're right, I can probably take it out. Building permit revenue. So you can, you can see this year is, uh, is that big tall line that goes all the way to the top. Uh, we've seen, uh, steady permits in all sectors, including residential, commercial, industrial. We do expect to see, uh, some additional, uh, commercial industrial permits next year, although it's really hard to, to know for sure, uh, how, uh, those are going to go forward because, uh, there's just so many factors that go into it. There's projects that are ready, uh, to go forward. The question will be whether they go forward or not. Some of the residential projects are going to continue, I think, to, to move forward very strongly. You're going to still see the construction of the apartment buildings, um, especially the one up by Coles, uh, that's, uh, that's, uh, occurring now. Uh, but like I said before, we're not going to see the levels that we've seen for the last three years. And so when we look at budgeting for next year, you can see that we, we budgeted, uh, you know, at, at about that one point one million, which we've sort of seen as sort of our average, uh, year, uh, for, uh, you know, we did see an anomaly in two thousand twenty, uh, during COVID, uh, where we saw some, uh, decrease in activity. But in general, we've seen about a million dollars a year, uh, for permits. But like, one of the, one of the things I did mention before is because we've, basically issued these permits in two thousand twenty-three, um, some of them. But the work is actually going to occur in two thousand twenty-four for, um, for actually inspecting them. There is going to be some portion when we come back for the final budget that we recommend taking out of that two point five to transfer into two thousand twenty-four so that we make sure that we cover those expenses, uh, as we move forward with, with building permit, uh, building permit activity for next year. Uh, population, uh, you can see for two thousand twenty-three, uh, we're a little over twenty-eight thousand. So twenty-eight, one seventy is what the my council, uh, had us at. Um, you can see in two thousand twenty-four, when we see those six hundred, uh, uh, units, uh, be put up, we were pretty conservative on what we actually used as the, as the numbers to, uh, determine where the population goes. Uh, but, you know, we do think over the next two years, especially with those apartment buildings, uh, being built, that we're going to, you know, we're probably going to approach thirty thousand, uh, within the next couple of years, uh, as those buildings, uh, fill up. Next slide. Uh, we've continued to see it, uh, our, our ten percent electric, uh, fund transfer continued to rise. And that's because we've continued to see elec- uh, electricity use, uh, continue to rise. That's been a number of factors. One of them is that we've just seen more, uh, businesses, uh, and usage by our businesses in the, in the community. Um, we've seen businesses expand in our existing industrial park where we've seen a lot of that, uh, growth occurring. But we've also had, uh, very hot, dry weather for the last couple of years too, which is, uh, definitely increased. Increase those numbers. We do weather adjust when we're developing, uh, the budget, uh, so that we take into consideration that some years are going to be different than others. Uh, but I will say that we continue to see rates be less next, so we're about six to seven percent lower, uh, for two thousand, uh, twenty-three, uh, compared to two thousand twenty-two. Last year, we were about five percent lower. So that's something we keep, keep an eye on as we.
There were big increase coming.
What's that?
Didn't I just see something, they got a big increase coming?
Well, they were supposed to. They actually, uh, they actually had their, they had actually went for a very large increase. And the Public Utilities Commission actually denied, uh, their increase. So it's, it's really sort of complicated, but going back to their rates that they had in two thousand twenty-two, they're actually going to owe some kind of a refund back to their, uh, uh, back to their customers for two thousand twenty-two. Their two thousand twenty-three rates that they set as sort of interim rates are, uh, and we got this information from David Niles at, at MMPA. Um, so the two thousand twenty-three rates that we're comparing to, uh, are going to be pretty close, uh, the interim rates that they use compared to what they actually got approved for. Uh, as they go into the future though, um, you know, they, uh, they can't go back for another rate increase case until twenty-five. Four twenty-five, so we're going to see one year where they're probably going to be limited on their increase to probably about a two percent increase is what, uh, David was thinking. So when, when you see our electric budget come through, we are. So when when you see our electric budget come through, we are going to be cognizant that there's going to be one year. Uh in there that they won't probably see as high of increases they have in the past. But with that being said. Our energy adjustment clause uh compared to Excel has been significantly better uh than what they've seen. So um. You know, but it's something we pay attention to uh, you know, to make sure we keep in the market. But I do expect. There's been quite a bit of news uh out there uh with Excel being not so happy uh about the decision that the PUC made. And I sort of get it because you know, we just got the uh carbon free uh standards uh implemented on us and that's going to cost money. Um it's going to cost money for all utilities to do that and for Excel to be able to do it, it's probably, it's going to cost more money too. And so um I. Highly suspect when they come back in twenty twenty five, that's going to be their main argument is, hey, if you expect us to go out and implement these. These carbon free standards, we need to set our rates appropriate to be able to 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 capture those. So we're going to be watching it for for twenty four and. See, but but as far as uh our comparison, we we are actually in a better position rate wise uh this year than we were last year. Uh next slide. Next slide. So these are the the discussion items. Again, I said it was deja vu all over again, uh really sort of talking about the the. Uh very similar things to what we talked about last year. I'll just jump right into each one of them. So next slide. Uh first of all, our operational tax levy policy, this policy focuses on establishing a levy based on factors that actually impact our cost of services. So expenditure inflation and new growth are the things that directly impact our cost of services and our cost of providing the same services increases. And we now have more residents in area to provide our service to. Uh so our policy would say that we add to uh only add to that tax levy beyond that point if if we're actually adding a new program. So for two thousand twenty three, the uh new growth is about three point two four percent. For inflationary costs, we're using about five percent for that. The uh and what we do for that is. We actually go back and look at uh, we actually go back and look at, you know, what are some of those major expense items that we have? I had my actual sort of all these these numbers, but our particularly our energy and fuel costs have been up in the thirty plus percent increase uh range. And so um now, when you sort of look at that over the cost of of all services, that doesn't mean all services are at high. But we've continued to see those those increased inflationary uh pushes on on the types of services that we use uh, you know. Use the most and stuff. So you know, when we're looking at the inflationary factors, we're really looking at what what is it costing us more to be able to provide those same services? So you know, the impact, if we look, if we said the only thing we are dealing with this year is our operational tax levy policy. It would say that the impact would be five dollars and ninety seven cents per month for the median value home, which is about three hundred and eighty thousand uh dollars. So each part of these, I'll sort of add on uh what each part, and then you'll see the total at the at the end. Uh next slide. Our camp programs, so this is our capital asset maintenance program. So uh we worked uh back in the um middle part of of this last decade on on. Uh for four years to fully implement a million dollar program uh that really is meant to maintain our existing assets and and keep them in good condition for future generations. Uh we have reinvested a million dollars annually into our general funds uh since two thousand seventeen. The only gap year we had was during COVID. Uh when we did pull back uh two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars as a mid-year change to make sure that we balanced our budget that year. Um so we really focus on street seal uh coats, overlays, trail surface rehabilitation, neighborhood park rehabilitation. Um components of community park rehabilitation and then rehabilitation of things like city lots, retaining walls, pavers, you name it. Uh next slide. For this next year, the program project, so we do see that we have five hundred thousand dollars going towards our street uh seal coat and overlay program. Each year we put in sixty thousand dollars towards trail resurfacing, which gets us three miles of of trails resurfaced each year. We have two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that's going into Lions Park uh playground. Uh we're continuing to try to put reinvestment back in into that park. We just got the park shelter done this year. Uh we have that big retaining wall on Bavaria Road in Innsbruck uh that is our responsibility that uh uh does need to get replaced and that's about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Something we hire out or we do that?
Um I don't know. That's a good question. Some things we try to do our own, I would assume we hired out.
Actually, the wall, we're thinking of possibly not replacing it. We're working with that property owner to come up with some different options for them. It's rather than not have a retaining wall for us to maintain is a good thing, but it's still a cost.
The other one, this was, this was a uh request uh um as our work session was to look at how we push up the pickleball courts uh into to Lions Park. So uh we do have uh in there an expansion of Lions Park Pickleball Courts. We do see some funds would would come from the Park Development Fund to support this. This was something that we originally had programmed, I think, in twenty twenty six uh but uh had moved that up.
So it's a, it's a hundred and fifty plus seventy five or?
No, it's a hundred and fifty thousand, seventy five thousand, we'd look for the park department. Um. Yeah, the, these are twenty five and twenty six, probably not as pertinent for tonight. Uh staffing study implementation, uh that's sort of the third piece of it. So oh and by the way, the camp program is part of our baseline tax levy. So it's, it doesn't add to it, it's already included in that baseline uh tax levy. Uh staffing study is one that wa- was an additional program and you know, this gives the whole history. I think you guys have probably seen the history of it for. For at least the last four years, but really we did a study to look at where were our gaps. And being able to be at a baseline of where we needed to be to provide our our services, but then we also looked at what what did we anticipate we were going to need in the future. But the biggest emphasis was saying that, hey, we had a gap of where we really should be for the the types of services and the level services that that we provide. And from that, we came up with a four year program uh that basically funded uh making sure that we get those positions uh filled. Uh so each year uh adds about four hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars of additional tax levy. Uh plus, the other thing that we did when we implemented this was that we had no building maintenance program. And so uh not only were building maintenance uh positions added, but we also uh added a contribution of a hundred. And twenty five thousand dollars annually from our enterprise funds, so not from the tax levy to basically support creating. Uh a fund to be able to put towards building maintenance of of our facilities out there. So the impact of the staffing study just on its own uh adds about four dollars per month. So that brings up, if you look at just the baseline. Uh tax levy plus the staffing study has an impact of nine dollars and ninety seven cents.
This is the last year of staffing study.
This is the last year after this year, we're done.
And we don't have anything else other than our building program.
That would be the only new program that we have on there. This gives you a sense of, you know, this is our last year of implementing it. We have our fifth building maintenance worker, we have a stormwater maintenance worker, we have a street maintenance worker. A water and sewer maintenance worker, we have a payroll support specialist and then our thirtieth patrol officer. Uh that would be uh included uh in that number. Uh one thing I'll point out is the difference between what you guys saw in the work session and uh what we're seeing here. We had a. IS, I forget what was network administrator position that was in here before. We really looked at this and first of all, we determined that there was probably a different way that we can fund that even through some potentially grant funds. But really looked at uh one of the things that we're really struggling with, given the number of people in our in our organization is is payroll. Uh we only have one person uh that's dedicated towards it now. And so instead of funding that IS position, we recommend that we actually replace it with a payroll support specialist. Um because yeah, you know, it, we need to have backup, we need to. Function of what we do. So it's not in, it's not doing any more positions. We just put a, we felt that that one was a higher priority. Uh position that that was there.
So now additional positions will be filled as just through organic growth.
Yes.
Right.
Yep. And you'll see, there's actually some of that that actually occurs uh in this budget that I'll talk about too. And then the building improvement plan, um you know, this slide sort of talks about the reasoning behind it. Obviously, we have uh facilities that are thirty plus years old that have had little reinvestment put into them. Uh they were built originally using one-time dollars and so uh we we haven't had the ability to really take retiring debt service and put them back into. Uh reinvesting into them. Um and then just the history of of how we sort of developed sort of a a program, really looking at what were the square footage needs uh that we had out there. Uh creating some uh pricing around it to really sort of uh uh create a a program. Uh which in May of two thousand twenty two, um the uh um. The uh council uh uh basically adopted that that study. And then um you know, we started uh moving forward to uh you know, actually implement this 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 last year. So. Uh if you remember, last year we did a pretty significant uh effort to educate the public in that park parties and flyers and all kinds of stuff that we had in there. Uh to really talk about uh what uh you know, what was the need of the program and 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 why uh you know. Uh why the council felt it was important to move forward with it. So obviously, part of the building improvement program, uh the. The following is sort of the priority list. The first fall is the public safety center, obviously, which you saw tonight and we've been working on. Uh since the beginning of the year as guys uh going through a design process. The second building that would be in that um. In a priority uh list would be the municipal service building and primarily because we've just really run out of space on that site and we have equipment sitting outside a a a lot of things that shouldn't. Um and uh just do do not have the need. So we view that as sort of that that second priority in this. And we're going to continue to to need this space as we grow um you know, with new trucks and things like that.
We, would we start that moving of that electrical tower before we get into that process?
So we're our, we've already started that sort of the paperwork process with Excel. Um we we wouldn't start any, you know, like the incurring of costs sort of things until we'd actually go forward with the actual program for uh. Two thousand twenty four, um but we sort of started that internal process with Excel to to get that move.
That project won't interfere with our project, would it?
Um well, it's the.
Think it would. So that's why I was wondering, wouldn't we do it ahead of time?
Yeah, well, it, it's going to be done likely as simultaneous type of a a a project, but there is a process that we have to go through uh for that. And uh um so uh your, our electric departments already sort of started the process with Excel to say, okay, we we need to move this forward. So. Um the third one was the new library uh and really the, you know, that's one that we heard the most feedback from the public as far as high need. Um and also, it's hard for us to do anything with remodeling City Hall until we actually, you know, address the library first. Uh and so that's another reason that City Hall was was put last. But yeah, it municipal service building, we would take a very similar approach next uh January. Uh where we would start that process of going out and actually uh finding an architect for that, continue to work with Excel uh to to get that line uh going. I mean, we've, we've started that process. I I don't have a, I won't say I have a hundred percent confidence that they can completely meet our schedule, but we just, we have to work through their process.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we get all what we need done ahead of time, that's going to help when the time comes to pull trigger.
Yep. Um and the good thing is is that, you know, obviously, we have. You know, we're, we've started the process already, you know, keep in mind that the design process and the planning process is going to take us until. It's going to take us over a year. Uh so we go from January basically until that next May. Uh so we have eighteen months there, they've at least shared with us that it takes fourteen months to go through the process. So. Like I said, I always take things with a little grain of salt, but we have started that communication with Excel.
Does that state, they have to de-energize that, right? Or can they keep that?
I have no idea.
I just wondered how that worked, if they can.
I would assume they'd have to, but I don't know. I don't, I have no idea how that works. It looks big. Uh so uh building it uh improvement plan, they expect a timeline. Uh so again, twenty three, we're we're designing the public safety facility and completing the planning process, which obviously we're doing now. Uh in two thousand twenty four and early in the year, uh we're going to go through the the uh bidding process. And then we'd hope to start in the spring and it's about an eighteen month construction process. Simultaneously to that, we would uh start that process with the MSP uh to get the architectural process moving forward. Uh with that, very similar to what we did with the uh uh public safety center. Uh twenty twenty five, really then, we would uh complete the bidding process to choose a contract for MSP. About a fourteen month construction process and then we'd start the process of the library. And then in twenty six, uh we would com- uh complete the bidding to choose a contract for a library and then start the remodel work, uh design work for City Hall. And then uh in twenty seven, uh we would uh choose a a contractor for uh City Hall.
They're pretty much going to be all different architects, just because of expertise.
Maybe, maybe not. Um it's i- it's possible, but uh you know, it. You know, the, we saw a lot of different architects put in their stuff for for the public safety center. And that process probably what ended up taking about a month, a month and a half longer than we thought it would, um but primarily because um. A lot of times with the architects, it gets down into how much, how much attention and time can they put towards the project and are you going to see the same people? Who you're interviewing with, they're actually going through through the process. And so it's, it's not impossible to say that we might see similar uh architect come out. So that's why we go through the process. We go through, we go through the process to interview them and see what makes sense.
There's definitely an expertise in public safety buildings.
Yep.
Maybe the other ones not quite as much because it's just really.
Or warehouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. Um so this gives you a sense, you know, that the hope would be is that early summer of twenty eight, so we we still have five years. Of you know, sort of going through this uh that uh you know, we uh uh hope for for being completed with City Hall. This shows what we uh anticipate the um the cost of the different facilities to be. And uh um what that debt service uh expectation would be. And then this one, we talked a little bit about during, oh, sorry, I'm I'm switching on here and I'm forgetting that he's switching on there.
You did a good job keeping up with it.
Thanks, Kevin. Uh the uh um so the the one thing that we talked a little bit about. Uh at the the last session is that when we looked at, you know, we knew for twenty twenty three that was going to be an eight dollar impact per month for just a building program. In twenty twenty four, we had actually anticipated that that was going to be a nine dollar per month increase. That's going to be seven seventy five. And we can actually sort of project out based on sort of what we know now and see that the impact is uh you know, about thirty one dollars. So thirty dollars and seventy five cents per month for the for the uh medium value home in the community, which again, when we started this out. Uh we had thought that was going to be thirty four and now that's down to to about thirty one. So.
We know it's going to go down next year.
What's that?
We know it's going to drop again next year.
What's going to drop the?
That number. Just based on what we got going.
Good, yeah.
I I mean, we can't guarantee it.
We can't guarantee it, that's.
We have to say what's what's reality, but chances are good that that number should decrease.
There's always a chance it could decrease.
I can say.
What I can say is it did decrease this year. That's the, that's the certainty I can provide you.
Those in the back.
Yeah, that that's the, that's the only certainty I can provide you. The rest is projections. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we've already talked about this, sort of the community engagement process that that we went through, it's pretty robust as we went through it. Um, the other thing I want to talk about is just sort of other items of note. So one of them, uh, you know, we talked a little bit about this during the uh work session process is that the state is providing one-time state aid dollars to support expenditures for police and fire. And we know for certain by the end of December, we're gonna receive about one point five million dollars. Um, the, as we look at these, uh, we're looking at things, uh, you know, trying to support things. There are one-time expenses, so we don't uh, you know, have sort of those future costs. And one of the things I, you guys made, I think, a really good comment during the work session, and I think we went back and and looked at is, you know, I think we sort of went into this process thinking, um, well, geez, we need to spend these dollars this year because, you know, they came in. We don't need to spend these dollars this year. And so I think we're sort of reapproaching the way that we're looking at these public safety dollars and saying, you know what? It, we should really be looking the at this, no di- you guys made the comment, we shouldn't be looking at this any differently than we would through a typical uh, you know, budget process and to say, what are those things that we, you know, we really need? Like, for instance, I can say for certain that we're gonna be coming back and saying, we think we should be using public safety dollars to uh purchase the drones. We think that that's something that would add uh to our uh service levels. Um, you know, I know that uh, you know, one thing that that Ryan talked about during the uh, the process is that having some kind of a camera trailer uh that we're able to to bring out enhances our services and things are. So, you know, we had sort of looked at what are some potentials before, as if we were gonna spend those dollars in two thousand twenty-four. We're sort of looking at this differently now and saying, you know what? We have, we have as much time as we want to to spend these dollars, and let's really sort of save these and use them as things pop up that that we really think are gonna enhance our services.
They don't have a closed date on that money? That's ours? Just given to us?
It's, Noel, as far as we've heard, it's, it just carries into the future.
Yeah, there is no defined period on how long we have to spend it that we've heard of so far.
Wouldn't be a one-time spending, that would be a future budget, I don't think.
It would, um, but.
They're only gonna last so long.
Yeah, but I mean, it it gives us time to build that into an equipment replacement schedule. I mean, the reality is 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 you know, we, there's certain things that, like, we wouldn't wanna, we wouldn't necessarily wanna fund a position. Um, that's a a large ongoing thing that's gonna be every year we have to spend those dollars. Do we have to replace a drone? Yes, but it's gonna be once every ten years or what, you know? So it's it's really trying to 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 look at those things that don't incur an ongoing annual expense uh that go with them. But I I guess maybe the main point is we're gonna have those dollars, but what you're gonna see when we come back with the final budget is w- we're gonna really have that pared down to really look at what are the things that we really think um, could, we think are gonna really enhance our services and and we think would be wise to move forward with.
None of it can be used on the building.
None of it can be used on the building, and none of it can be used on any tactical equipment either. So there's, there's some restrictions that they have on what it can and can't be used for.
Um, drones are not considered tactical more.
No, it's, yeah, it's 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 more of a, yeah, it's it, yeah. So there there are restrictions, but buildings definitely are not one that we can use them on.
Vehicles?
Yeah.
We can use it on vehicles, yes. Yep. The other one is the state created the metro sales tax to fund transportation, but they also uh uh, more importantly, for cities uh, use some of the sales, metro sales tax to uh provide do- dollars to cities uh for affordable housing stocks. So we know for certain that the city of Chaska is gonna receive two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-four. This'll go up to three hundred and seventy-five thousand in two thousand twenty-five, and we will get this money every year. So this is an ongoing uh amount that's supported by that sales tax. And this money has to be used for the creation and preservation of affordable housing stock. So uh, one of the things that that we've talked about is 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 uh, being something that we think would be important to use this, these dollars for first is to do sort of a uh, housing study to sort of look at where our gaps are and where uh where we should be sort of uh targeting investing means dollars going into the future. Um, and then beyond that, then, you know, looking at what opportunities might exist next year for, maybe it's a land trust home or maybe it's, you know, s- some things like that, but just like the police aid, it'd be that we'd bring those things back to you guys uh during the course of the year, we'd budget that those dollars would be coming in um, and some type of expense about it, but bring back specific programs to you guys as as we identify those. Next slide. Um, and then I just sort of put down sort of uh, sort of things of of note. Um, so this gets to your question, uh, customer along about the um uh, you know, once you get done with the staffing study, then you start looking at staffing based on sort of the growth that you see in your community. Um, we do have a CSO intern position that uh we are are budgeting for uh, twenty-six, a little over twenty-six thousand dollars. We have seen a uh increase in the amount of activity there, CSOs uh participate in, but also we look at this as a potential pipeline for uh potential candidates in the future too for for police services.
How would one uh CSO, how would that work out? When, what do we got, three of them now, and don't they rotate uh shifts, or how how would? Would it be another person? You'd have two of them on at times?
He, yeah, there's certain times that we have there much busier than other times. Uh, Fire Chief uh for uh operations. Uh, so one of the things that we have right now is our function, we functionally have our training and operation jobs for our chiefs within the department under one person. And we just don't see that being sustainable uh over time, because they're two very distinct uh uh jobs. And so we've built in uh the funding of that position uh for uh two thousand uh twenty-four.
Uh, internal position or are we gonna hire, or would that be put out as an external, internal?
We always, we always go through the process of of uh, you know, making an open process for anybody. So, um, it could be internal, it could be an external position. Uh, part-time election staffing, uh, so obviously, next year is an election year, so we'll have to uh budget for our election uh judges. And then we have a part-time lodge programmer uh that we're uh programming to go to full-time. Uh, that's actually in our general fund. Uh, we actually have seen a pretty high uh increase in the amount of uh AOA programming. Most of this additional cost is actually offset by additional revenue we, that would be supported through the programming, so if they do. Uh, equipment uh purchase, uh, so uh, these would be sort of the the things that uh are are needed to uh to be able to deal with sort of additions in the community, so uh we now have the need for additional dump truck or snowplow. Uh, we have, uh, because we're finishing off our billing maintenance department, we do need one more uh billing maintenance vehicle uh to be able to round out our building maintenance department. Uh, with the improvements that are made on Highway forty-one, there's gonna be different types of uh equipment that we're gonna need to be able to uh maintain uh the uh streetscape that we have down there, so let's list off that. And then we have the uh need to to be able to uh have a fiber extension that would create a loop, so a multiple-direction feed uh going for uh between two of our our water towers uh in the community. Um, and we wanna especially have this uh done for the public safety campus so that we're uh able to make sure we have a robust enough uh uh loop to be able to serve that that campus. Now those, uh, that's actually paid for through our utility uh departments. And then I I put in as consulting services and partnerships, one of them is the continuing implementation or planning and zoning audit. So this is something that that Nate's been working on, and obviously, we had a a work session with the planning uh commission. Uh, we, this is sixty-five thousand dollars, but this will be offset by a grant that we actually uh would receive from the Met Council uh next year, uh, so it's it's a cost, but with, but it's covered through a grant. Uh, implementation of Lexible Policy Manual, updating and maintenance in our fire department. Uh, there's a desire to to have that policy manual uh match up uh with what the exact same uh uh, system that we use within our police department, uh, which keeps us up to date on our policies and make sure that if there's any changes in laws that we stay up and 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 uh keep up with that. And then our joint SWAT concor- consortium, it'd be twenty thousand dollars for the first year, but then five to six thousand dollars thereafter. Right now, we have no affiliation with a SWAT team. Um, you know, you know, so it makes it difficult to count on those services when we need them. Uh, so this is making sure that we have a formal relationship with a SWAT team. And uh, and can participate and then be uh receive their services when they're needed. Uh, next slide, uh, you can go to the next slides after that. So this is, this is the total impact. Uh, so the median value home in two thousand twenty-three is three hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred. The median value for pay twenty twenty-four is three hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred. You can see in two thousand twenty-three on that example home, uh, the taxes were one thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars. In two thousand twenty-four, the example home would be one thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's an increase of two hundred and one dollars uh annually or sixteen seventy-five per month. This is actually slightly lower even than what I showed you in the work session. Uh, in the work session, we had estimated uh based on what we had at that time, that'd be seventeen dollars and forty-one cents. It's uh down to sixteen seventy-five, and it's uh lower than the increase uh that we saw in two thousand twenty-three, which was seventeen dollars and fifty cents per month, so it's about seventy-five cents less than what that impact was last year. Next slide. This gives you a, uh, that's really hard to see. Why don't you go to the next slide and then which which actually explains it? Um, so we went from sixty-fourth lowest to fifty-fifth lowest. Um, we looked at our actual levy and then um, that we're proposing and then a five percent increase in every every other city's levy, which, as we've looked around, that seems to be a pretty typical number. One thing to point out is we sort of looked at, if we were to add all three years of the remaining uh tax level for the building program, we'd actually be very close to the midpoint uh of uh cities in the metro area based on the assumptions we have now. And one of the things that to take in consideration is, once we're done with this building program, we're still gonna have a lot of growth uh that occurs in the community. And so, um, you know, we expect as we go into the future, after we have this implemented, as we continue to see that growth, that those numbers will get better as we, as we go forward. Uh, last slide, uh, just to give you a sense of the schedule for the two thousand twenty-four uh budget. Obviously, tonight, we're doing the uh maximum uh tax levy and preliminary budget. In October and November, we'll be reviewing enterprise fund budgets. On December fourth, we'll have our annual truth and taxation hearing, and then on December eighteenth, we'll uh consider adopting the final two thousand twenty-four budgets and establishing that final tax levy. Um, so I know that's a lot of information. I know you guys have seen it a couple times before. Um, but um, I I guess if I had to say anything, really, you know, what what we're seeing for two thousand twenty-four is really just a continuation. And obviously, with the new program, especially with the building program, that has a uh impact on on the uh uh taxes that move forward a- as we move forward. Uh, but it is consistent with everything that we talked about and just continuing on the implementation of the things we talked about last year. And again, it is the last year of the staffing program, so the only new thing uh that we'd be talking about next year would be the actual building improvement program. What's that?
Just not the building program.
Well, yeah, that, I'm talking about new programs. The only new program that we'd have still uh to to work on implemented, we'd still have two years of the building improvement.
How much was the staffing set?
It was four hundred and.
Was it four dollars?
Oh, as far as impact, it was about four bucks. Uh, the baseline was about uh five, yeah, six bucks.
Because it's, it was about a ten dollar.
Yeah, yep.
Seventeen, well, sixteen seventy-five, I guess.
Yeah. Any questions?
Only one small question, it's like for the SWAT participation.
Yeah.
Also have to, do we also have to contribute people to?
Yeah, it, it will, so what we'll do is that that includes the training. That twenty thousand dollars is a little more the first year as opposed to the uh future years, because there's the training costs that we have uh with people. So, yeah, we do have people then trained. I, I, Ryan told me, I think it's two or three.
Thanks.
Yep. All right. So the action tonight is to to establish the maximum uh tax levy. Uh, obviously, we can go down from this, but we cannot go up uh once we set the the maximum tax levy for this year.
Comments, questions, thoughts?
Two times before.
Yeah, I used to see that lower next year.
Yep.
All right, uh, we have on the floor is a motion to adopt our our motion for Resolution twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash seventy-nine. Uh, adopting proposed assess twenty twenty-three payable twenty twenty-four maximum tax levy. So we could go down if something would occur, but we can't go up. Did I hear a motion? Is that what you said?
No. So moved.
Got a motion by customer, second by customer along to uh adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventy-nine. Discussion. It's been stated here, we've seen this many, many times already. Don't take these lightly, but we have a lot of stuff going on, so. The long run, I think it's the right way to go, so. Right, nothing else? All in favor, seven to five, are saying aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Uh, right, that's it for action items. We move to bills. Anyone have a question on the bill?
I can with you. Um, so let's see, page nine, there's one for Chaska Commons, there looks like a building imp loan to, and then it gets cut off. Um, wondering what that was for.
So this is a storefront loan uh that was made to the building, actually where Mindot is actually uh residing now for their uh offices, C L Davis Business Machine Building, uh, so they're gonna be doing pretty extensive work on that, taking off stucco.
Go and take a look at it. The stucco is off the building.
Oh. It's it's on forty, what's that?
Where is it?
It's on forty, yeah, between second and third on forty-one.
So wear my hard hat. All right. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about this few weeks.
Yeah, we did. I just like can't picture this building. Oh, wait, no, now I can.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we looked at the pictures.
Late.
Okay. So I was like, I think it's a building, right?
Okay, so um, page twelve, um, there's an item under education technologies, and there's like the fourth item down says a data center refresh. I mean, I know what the other stuff is, but.
Yep.
Was the refresh.
So the data center refresh, um, I'm just gonna read what Noel told me because so uh, it's for equipment purchases and associated costs related with replacement of blade servers and sand storage uh that were at end-of-life, and they were already scheduled to be replaced in two thousand twenty-three.
Well, I know what it is. Speaking my language now, so, okay. So basically, this is hardware being obsolete, and so you need to replace it, because it's end-of-life and non-supportable. So it blows up, it's like, you can, you'll get support. Okay, got it.
And the other ones, uh. And the other ones, a question that you had is not part of our city DRP system.
Yeah.
This is actually, it's an inventory control system that our mechanics department put in place to to basically. Manage, have an electronic managed system of our of our fleet maintenance.
Okay, gotcha. Because I don't remember seeing that vendor before and it was like.
We we haven't had an electronic management of that before. That's something that our head mechanic has just implemented.
Yeah, gotcha. Do we, because I know we have some big equipment, so I'll sidetrack, but we have some really big equipment. So, you know, if we need to like put it up on a hoist or something like that, do we have an ability to do that in-house? Or do we have to like? Cool, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Yeah, one for you. It's on page twelve, this is City of Lionel Lakes. Forty-five hundred dollars gear for new inspector. I know he came from up that way. Did we buy the gear that they bought? I don't know. He said it's turnout gear. Just check it out.
Yeah, I can check on it. Yeah. It's not your inspector.
No, it's a fire inspector.
It's a fire inspector. Yeah, I'm not sure if he already had stuff and we just bought it from them as he came down. I'll check on that.
I didn't think he was with Lionel, I thought it was Valley, but. Anyone else on bills? Alright, motion pay the bills. Motion by Congressman Wong. Second by Congressman Hatfield to pay the bills, discussion. Hearing none, at least. And yes, alright, moves us to other business. About Congressman Member Hatfield, we'll start.
Things coming up, Coffee with a Cop is on Wednesday from nine to ten. At McDonald's. That's a new one. I don't know which McDonald's, the north one, and food distribution this Thursday. Coming up, so those are some activities. And then, of course, the. Oh my gosh, the festival on Friday, that's escaping me right now. Thank you, Latin music festival. I was gonna say Latin food festival, so you can tell what I'm excited about from that festival.
Kayla, Caitlin mentioned for the that food distribution seems like another like ten people or something. So she needs like another like ten people for food distribution. So.
Other too, so.
Yeah, it's actually gonna be nice.
Yep, it's from ten to one thirty, I think, so.
Um, and then the only other thing I had was just we had another downtown business alliance meeting on Friday, so. Obviously, work is progressing downtown. I think everyone's just like ready for it to be done. But kind of the feedback, just so you guys are all filled in on that. So with the first weekend in November, basically, November is going to be a big month for a lot of our downtown businesses, obviously with. Thanksgiving for like the wine shop and then the first weekend for some of the like more boutique businesses. That's a big weekend for them, so they're just really hoping to see some good progress. And I know that city staff is doing a great job to try and see what we can do. To make some of the downtown area more accessible, but it's very easy to get in now, so I would still encourage people to go down there. And then the work on sixty-one is switching to the other sides. If you've driven down there lately, it's been on one side. I don't know what side you call that, the south side of it. Would you call it the south side of it? Right? Okay, the south side of sixty-one, um, and is going to move now across the street, so that'll impact Nicolay Bank and Chasers.
Assume they would pay that first. You gotta pay it first or do it all at once, because there's a center island.
They'll pay the south side first. Okay, yeah.
But still go to Chasers and the bank, you can still access it, so. Um, I think that's it.
Are they proposing any sort of party like once the road?
That's a great question, Taylor. Let me tell you about that. Um, well, actually, maybe staff can say better. That's been the plan all along, is to partner with. Downtown business alliances and the businesses to throw kind of like a yay, construction is over. So with that first weekend being an important one, I think we're kind of looking at that right now as a target date.
Is fourth, right?
Yeah.
November fourth is.
Okay, yeah. So there'll be a big party and everyone will know about it. Everybody will be required to come. There you go, the whole city, immediately on Second Street. Absolutely. So, but it is nice, there's, oh, I know, there's crews out every day working very, very hard. So that's exciting to like finally see curbs happening and things like that. So, great, that's kind of the update, but thanks for the.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, oh, my screen. So I, two things, I had the. Privilege of attending the. Chaska celebrates African cultures. That was. Not last Friday, but the Friday before. How long ago was that? It was wonderful. It was such a great celebration. There was a lot of vibrancy. And, you know, they did like a fashion show and they had different museum artifacts on display and they had different facts about, you know. Some of the meaning behind like the flags, every country's flag in Africa and and just, you know. Facts, and they had a scavenger hunt, and then they did a dance portion of it. It was a, was a, is a wonderful event, really well done. I see you in the audience, because you good, good job. And I just want to mention it because I know there were some murmurs of people saying kind of that. There should be like a, like an overall festival celebrating everyone's culture and I can understand that, but I think just it's so nice. To be able to highlight, because Africa is a huge continent, just the different cultures within the continent in Africa. Really focus and feature on those populations in our community or surrounding communities. I just think that that's really important to really dial down and highlight. Some of that vibrancy. And so I'm very excited for this weekend's Latin and food and music festival. And and as it's, it's Hispanic Heritage Month. So I just think that that's what's fun about Chaska is that we can really be inclusive like that. And really highlight all of our different communities and all of our different members and allow them individually to shine. So anyways, but changing gears, the only other thing that I was going to mention is. There is a open house for the Highway Five. And eighty-second Street Improvement Project, so there are two different projects, but they're both being highlighted in this open house. It's on Wednesday, September twenty-seventh, and it's at the Arboretum. It's in their Oswald Visitor Center. One thing I like to mention is that some people often ask, do you have to pay admission into the Arboretum? No, you just tell the gate attendants that you're there for the open house and they'll let you through, so you can go ahead and take a look. I had the opportunity to attend the neighborhood meeting. About a month ago almost and kind of hear some of the proposals in regards to eighty-second Street. But I think these are really important road projects coming up in the community, so. You know, whether, I mean, I think that's impacting, you know, for both the neighbors, but also just area residents. Because of the, you know, the complexity of that area. So anyways, just wanted to highlight that. That's all I have.
Thanks for bringing that up about that. I I'm out of town and will not be able to make that, so I'm hoping somebody from your council. I think it's, I I agree with you. I think that that's a big project and they they've, they're changing some. Thoughts on how they're gonna do the bridges now, instead of a massive bridge, they're gonna be doing shorter ones now. So I think it's gonna move the project along faster and do some things that should make it. More interesting and they got different phases of it, depending if they get more money, so it's. But definitely something that, if you have any interest in those two projects, I hope you make an effort to get there, so. Alright.
Yeah, that'll add on to that, the the, that meeting, so it talks about Highway Five and Eighty-second Street and Eighty-second Street needs to be done. Because that's where some of the traffic will be offloaded when they work on Highway Five too. So for anyone who has any interest in Highway Five or Eighty-second Street, it's like a really important, good meeting to be attending. None of these other items are also mentioned, but also I've mentioned that I was at the Chaska cares, Chaska celebrates African cultures event. It was a great event. It was a lot of, it was just a really entertaining event as well as educational, some great music and, you know, food and. You know, I've just learned a lot about, you know, about some different, some of the different cultures within within African continent, so it was really, really great event. Well done. And on Wednesday, October fourth, this is a kind of a broader one, it came from Carver County, that FEMA and FCC, oh, sorry, FCC will be. Doing an IPOS test. It's a test of basically an emergency alert. So if you've ever been in a meeting and you get like one of those Amber alerts on your phone or something like that. That's the wireless, this will called W, WEA, the Wireless Emergency Alert that, you know, can be broadcast. And then there's the other one, if you're watching TV and it comes blaring on your TV, that's the Emergency Alert System. They'll be testing those both together as part of a national test. And all be happening on Wednesday, October fourth at one twenty. So at one twenty in the afternoon, if you're near a phone or a TV or a radio. Expect them all to be going off at the same time between the half an hour. Yeah, because. Yeah.
Be a sporting complex or something.
Yeah, and and they're testing that because, you know, they want to make sure in case there is some some big disaster or something, we can reach out to anyone or everyone. So, you know, we all don't miss that big news, whatever happens to be. Saturday, October seventh, from noon to ten, Athletic Park is a Chaska Cares concert. So this music, food trucks, beer gardens, activities, craft booths, I think it's fifty dollars a person, is a fundraiser for the Miracle League Baseball Field. Universal Playground and Adaptive Shelter Building, so tickets are still available, so if anyone's interested, loves music, I think there's, you know, you probably talk more about some of the. Headliners that are coming up too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you want to talk about them now or do you wanna?
Yeah, sure. So the Chaska Cares Music Festival is being presented by Chaska Rotary. We actually just got together with the Lions prior to our our meeting tonight and they're going to be helping out as well. In in helping bring the Miracle League together, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of local artists as well as artists coming from. Across the country, so a couple of them of note that are are really pretty well known. Across the country is Weathered Souls and then Drayton Farley. Drayton Farley just had his Grand Ole Opry debut on Wednesday of last week and then started his tour from there. Just, you know, the the type of music that they're playing is Americana, sort of. Folkie rock, country type of of music, and then there's going to be some local bands too. If people are familiar with Space Jam, they play up the Heartbreakers quite a bit, so people know them from probably from there. And so seven bands in total that will be there throughout the day and people can come for a portion of the day or stay for the whole day. It's up to them.
Can you come in and out?
You can come in and out. So if you, you know, if you decide you want to come down, spend some time and then. You want to come back and see the headliner or something like that, you could do that as well, but. You know, this is a first year event, so we're just trying to get out the the word as much as possible and try to get as many people down there. So any support that be given would be great.
Kids seen price, are they not allowed or are they?
Kids are allowed. They are the same price. I I would say. It depends on what you think as being a parent to. I mean, there will be beer there, so I don't know if that, so some people may see those as a problem, some people may not. But yeah, it's it's one price for, same price for everybody that goes in.
And then Tuesday, October tenth, from eight thirty to nine fifteen, the House of Representatives Capital Bonding Tour will be, you know, taking a tour of. C-Square West is, you know, we're trying to secure the funding to complete that project, so that'll be a big one. But really exciting for a lot of us is that a week from today, on Monday, September twenty-fifth. Highway forty-one to the north, which is over by the PV Road, Costco, that area will finally be open again after being closed for a couple of months now. So that'll be like really exciting for a lot of people, actually finally some relief in forty-one. And then, you know, we'll see relief in forty-one to south a little bit, but on Monday, we'll be able to go north. That includes the new roundabout that's in front of where Costco would be, was being constructed, so. And also big progress up there as well. In addition to that, congratulations to Sarah Donovan, who's like, you know, taken a new position, so she's.
Sort of sad, but.
Yeah, she's doing a great job.
Yes, her's like, she's like a right-hand person to a lot of us, so she, I I'm super happy for though. Because she, you know, she deserves it and she's making the transition into something where it's a bigger department she's managing and stuff. And so she's definitely going to be missed, so.
And I, I have that on my list as well, but, you know, you think about, she took a organization like ours. That basically was a sideline job as the administrator, assistant administrator, that handled HR and probably not very well. Because it was. But she took and really created a good. Foundation for us to move off of, which I think is really important. I think about how important her role was in the pandemic as as part of our. Our. Those are team. ELC team, no, the ELC team that you wouldn't think normally you have that type of person, HR person in there. That was a big role in this particular event. And and not only was she trying to get her department started, we threw all those things at her and I think she, she got COVID or her kids got it. I mean, it was, yeah, so congratulations to Sarah. I mean, I'm I'm happy for her, but I'm sad that. We're just getting things rolling and but that's what happens.
Yep.
You know, if you train them right and they do a good job, their chances are they're gonna look for bigger and better, you know.
Yeah, and I think you hit the nail right on the head when you said she created, she created our HR system now. I mean, and and. Yeah, at one point in time, I used to do it all by myself and.
Not very good, like I said.
I thought I did just a fine job, but.
Much time into it, because you didn't have it.
Yeah, but no, she she created such a wonderful system and created a lot of trust. In people, which quite frankly, I mean, you know, it to to me, I mean, if you want a human resource department to be used. The the people who are 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 going to use it have to trust the person that they're working with. And she created that trust with with people that I think was really important and created a great system. So I I'm, I I'm happy and sad at the same time, so.
So that's best of wish, was best of luck to her. So also, the last thing I wanted to touch base on was that. We're actually just past the state fair and Southwest Transit actually had a great state fair year this year. We actually did, we actually carried seventy-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-six passengers for state fair this year. It was a thirteen percent increase over twenty twenty-two. We did add one day each week to the fair. But what's kind of cool is that if you actually look at it, even per day, we actually did better than in twenty twenty-two. So, which was really positive. Riders, so ridership was up there. We also, it was the first time we actually ran a customer satisfaction survey. And we had ninety-one percent of our riders rated it a good or excellent for state fair service. And ninety-six percent of riders said they would ride it again, so.
There's no better way to go to that state fair.
I would never do it any other way.
Even coming home, you're just tired, you sit down and. Yeah, there's nothing better.
Yeah, it's totally this great. So I was actually fortunate enough to be able to like work one of the stations for a little bit, helping to load some buses. And then ended up going to all the difference, to each of the different stations to, you know, meet some of the people who are working there. And then also down at the fairgrounds too and, you know, see the operations and everything was running really smoothly. It was just, you know, great to see all the, you know, all the great employees there doing a great job. So, you know, just want to report back that, you know, it's a, it's still a well-run operation. You know, and we do have a new CEO, you know, Eric Hanson, so, you know, he's been doing a great job and. And really kind of like be able to kind of open up the books and look at things in a little different way than than they will look at them before. So, you know, doing some good stuff and, you know, just carrying the tradition forward of, you know, keeping a great service for all of us. And then the last thing, of course, to mention too, is that since the state fairs, we see every year, we always see a bump in ridership. So about a hundred extra hours a day is what we've been seeing. So and part of that's a tribute to, you know, back to school. So some U of M students as well as, you know, the the typical ridership bump where, you know, people's ride the, ride the bus, have a great experience. Like, man, why am I not taking this? And so they start, you know, if you get, we pick up some riders always at the after state fair. So it's the best advertising we get is people just using the, using the system and realizing, wow, it's just really good. So it's uh, been some good, some good stuff. So, yep. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, I attended the fire station open house last Monday. It's always a fun event. Uh, there will be a sad day when my kids probably don't want to go to that. I'll still probably, and I'll still go myself and get my free hot dog, my popcorn and, and watch them cut, and watch them cut a car apart. I mean, all fun things to watch. Um, it's just fun, you know, I just, it's just to see the pride that the, the, of the fire uh, department puts into that. Uh, I always think the highlight, and I forget about it every year, you know, they rope off where they do the sprinkler and they, and the importance of closing your door, how fire don't spread. Now the kids get right up to the line and they're like, it's gonna get hot. And then you realize it does give you the hot, that thing's a blazing and all the kids are like, oh, I get this. Um, but it's always interesting because I think kids are kind of skeptical. Like, what do you mean it's gonna get hot? It's way over there and a thing starts to blaze and you can just feel that heat coming. Um, so awesome event. What's the plan in future years when new buildings being constructed for the fire open house? Have we thought about that?
Have it in your backyard. We said it's gonna be in your backyard. Me and Michaela both, we were quick-witted over here.
There we go.
There you go, answer. Community center.
We said, yeah. Um, I mentioned this last meeting and then just had physical observations, you know, with the Ren Fest not directly connected to anything here in the city of Chaska, but typically is negative because of traffic. Um, I, I, I haven't seen, I'm driving through that area. I went down.
Implemented some.
Implement some new changes with park rides and parking on site. It's been better. I mean, I, I haven't really seen forty-one back up. Um, yeah, I mean, they basically were told you have to figure out a plan or we're not gonna, but. And I, and I think it's worked and I hope it's, I, I have not attended it myself, but I hope people who've had a positive experience with it. But I, I haven't seen the traffic. I tended, I've gone that way. Now I, last Thursday, something happened. On forty-one, because I got stuck on the bridge or tried to get across the bridge and ended up turning around, but that out was not Renaissance Festival related. I'm not sure what it was, but traffic was not moving. Uh, yeah.
Coming in from Jackman?
Uh, I was going down, I was trying to cross, I was going south, tried to get to Burnsville by five o'clock. It was, I would, I did not make it to Burnsville by five o'clock. Um. So I just, you know, just, I think that's a positive, especially as you can imagine, some of the stuff we see past years. And if you would have added the construction of downtown, it would have been very messy down there. So I appreciate Scott Cowan for pushing that um, forward with that uh, organization. And then I just had a question regarding, I believe I saw that the, our Chaska Herald reporter for the city of Chaska is moving on. Are they planning on filling that, planning not? I mean, it's hard because you continue to see the small newspaper business struggle. But I also recognize the importance of a lot of people hear what happens at these types of meetings through reading that. So I'm just kind of curious. If we've heard anything as a city, if that's plans on being replaced?
Yeah, we haven't heard that they're not replacing it. Um, you know, I think they have a few positions they're trying to, to fill right now.
Well, I talked to her at the open house. Uh, she's leaving. The Shackley Reporter has resigned as well. Um. So the editor is in charge of four or five papers. So he's gonna have to be carrying some of the logs. So he's gonna want to try to get somebody hired. It's a matter of finding someone to hire. So.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just think there's, there's the importance of, that is, you know, we talk about people as much as we do as a city, try to tell people what's going on. People saying, well, I never knew this was happening. So I just think that's a, always a valuable resource to continue to be curious. And obviously we don't have much influence or anything like that, but.
Well, it's a, it's another uh, not everybody uses the Herald as their, but there are a lot of people that that is their news source. And that's, you know, why we try to get information out through, through so many different sources. And we still miss a bold vote, but all we can do is keep trying.
If you're lucky, you can get the mayor's autograph on one of your newspapers.
Put your head down. Put your hand down.
Uh, I, that is all I have.
Nate?
Your name's here at the end of a meeting.
I'm glad to be here.
Cause he has the, we have the thing afterwards.
Elise. First off, how about our opinion gallery? Nothing? Matt? Nothing. All right, a couple of things. Uh, we talked about some employees. Uh, I do want to recognize this one. I know. We don't always recognize employees, but I, I, sometimes I don't even know about it. But uh, Jack Worm is retiring forty-five years and eighty days. There, that is just like unheard of in this state. And, and there's another guy that kind of came into this. He was kind of the young guy that started as a lineman around a different crew that probably didn't share a lot. And he talks a lot about, he said, I just had to learn it. You just have to learn how to do these things. Jack has been an asset to this city for a long time. Uh, very, very knowledgeable. And there was a lot of knowledge there. I think Matt told me that the last, he's been working a lot about substations. If there's failures, right? There's a substation. Uh, just putting a book together about how to do that. So um, very fortunate, but I think Jack's last day is kind of the same day as Sarah's. No, his is at the end of the month. Um, but he is gonna stay on part-time for us for a while.
Yeah.
And help out.
For a few months to help out was her the transition.
And as they start to work on, on uh, the hiring for his position, uh, if it's internal, then they'll probably have to bump somebody else to some, you know, somewhere else. So. Um, but anyways, uh, congratulations to Jack and a really a big thank you from the city for all that you've done over all of those years. So. That's Sarah already done. Um, got an EDA meeting following this. Uh, that will, short EDA meeting. Um, tonight, we had a, a work session on the County Road ten or England, Engler Boulevard and Highway forty-one. It's really that corridor across is forty-one. Um, there, there's gonna be more to follow. There's gonna be some open houses. Anybody remember the date?
Remember?
November.
I don't remember.
Sometime in November, there's gonna be an open house for anybody that's watching. Um, so uh, things are gonna start moving forward here. Uh, but again, there's still a process to go through for final design and look for any additional feedback. So please, if you're on that corridor, please, please. Uh, follow that. You're gonna get me getting a letter. Uh, make sure you attend it. Very important meeting. So. All right, uh, I stopped over at construction. All the box culverts are in for the, for the tunnel. So that is now. Um, the tunnel itself is complete. They're starting to do, uh, apparently there's a concrete entrance thing that they're working on now. And I didn't realize that that's all gonna be paved. So they'll pave the, even the tunnel through and then both sides. I was thinking it was gonna be a poured concrete. So.
It's lit and cameras in it.
It's lit and cameras.
And cameras. There will be no crime there. While engineered tunnel.
I think that that's good news. I just talked to a couple of guys. I said, how you doing? And he says, well, we're really shooting hard for that November deadline to get that, to get the road open. And he said, I think we can do it. So, so that's good to hear. He said, I think the, the, the tunnel put them back, but now that once that's in, they can go, they don't have to worry about finishing off what's, what's there really. Uh, so they can finish a lot of that stuff next year. So uh, that's good. I, do you have a question? And maybe Matt Clark, why are you still here? Do we have to on the trail going along sixty-one? Uh, I was told by a resident that lives in Crystal Place, that all those shrubs have to come out that are there for screening. We can't get the trail in there without removing those shrubs. So sixty-one up by Crystal, across from Crystal Sugar. There's that long, they got a long row of some sort of a evergreen. But they were told in, through their stuff that those all have to come out.
Yeah, I, I know we're working on the project. Uh, we presented, you know, we presented a couple of options to the neighbors. Uh, we had an open house.
Uh.
Month or so.
I mean, the long and short of this, you know, based on what we're seeing is.
Eight, nine.
That's an option that, you know, we're ready to, please talk with them about. Uh, because. There is, there are, there are ways that we can go back and screen their properties better. Uh, but I think one of the options is having the shrubs go away.
Have them go away? You know?
Yes.
It just seems like you've got that natural screen there. Why not leave it? But.
The challenge is the placement of that screen. And it's, there's an easement that goes through there that basically extends the rail right away. And those shrubs are right smack dab down the center of it. Um, so as we're trying to position that trail and get it the best place that it needs to be, the, the shrubs became, they're a pretty big challenge.
And there's another meeting coming up.
Yeah, I think there is another. I mean, there were multiple options shared with them. I mean, moving the trail closer to the county highway is not an option. Right next to, if you were, leave the shrubs in, it puts the trail too close to the county highway. So it's kind of the, what would you say? The word butter of two evils, right? And if we were to leave the shrubs in, then the trail becomes almost right next door to, you know, somewhere where like people are parked. Unfortunately, that's one of the things that's gonna have to work.
I just, I just needed to hear if it was, if it, that was fact. To me, I drive by and look like I have a plane or a room there. And it's still not that close.
We are planning to have a follow-up with that neighborhood to kind of paint the picture of, once the project is done, here's what it could look like. And that's part of the whole process.
I, I know you're early stage, but I, I just needed to ask that. So.
Yeah, Alex and I went out to talk to some of the neighbors too about, uh, before they had that neighborhood meeting on eight, nine, to get some feedback too. But that is, the screening is very important to them.
Yeah, I would, I would certainly think so. I just thought the natural screening was already applied. So, okay. Uh, that's pretty much last I have. And like I said, we have an EDA meeting right now. So last call for anyone else. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by customer Wong. Second by council member Hubbard to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We adjourn. And we're gonna turn around and call the CBA meeting to order at ten twenty-eight. Uh, Elise, we follow.
Fisher Hatfield.
Here.
Fisher Hubbard.
Here.
Fisher Wong.
Yep.
Fisher Gra.
Here.
President Winchell.
All right, moves us to adopting the agenda. Corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion by um, Commissioner Hatfield.
Second.
Session. Hearing not all, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, item four, approving previous meeting minutes, air seven thirty-one twenty-three. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, that entertainer motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Gra.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hubbard to approve the seven thirty-one twenty-three meeting minutes discussion. There is not all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same side. There it was, it's item five, five A is to adopt the EDA Resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventy-one, which is a termination. Of a tax increment district number fifteen.
I'll turn this over to Reese, who's been working on it.
Uh, presenting commissioners, um, every year we meet with our financial consultant, Baker Tilly, just to kind of do a review of all of our TIF districts where they're at. Are they meeting our obligations or are we getting close to possibly um, having met those obligations? So in our review. Um, this year we determined that we have met our obligations with TIF District fifteen, which is a one parcel district. It's three twenty-one that street. Uh, back in two thousand and four, we created a redevelopment district there. To facilitate the redevelopment of the old Chamber of Commerce site um, to what is currently there. Um, and so. Um, we have met all of our um, obligations with that district. And so it is required for us to um, do a resolution to decertify the TIF district. Prior to the end of the year. So um, and then any excess increment from that, which we do anticipate having a little bit. Um, will be returned back to the county then for distribution among the, the three different groups there. So um, staff is recommending you adopt uh, EDA Resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventy-two.
Is that, is that normal to have? Um. This time like six years earlier? That fairly normal? I guess I don't recall.
Um.
TIF district.
Good thing.
I mean, it's a good thing. I, I would assume, but.
Yeah, uh, you know, it's uh. Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I, I remember when we, we set up that project. Um, and. Yeah, I mean, it, we're always pretty conservative when we try to figure out exactly what tax increment's gonna be generated on a, on a property. What actually happens with taxes over the years, a lot of times ends up being different than the assumptions that you use. So. It, this one's probably a little bit easier because it's only one parcel. And so there wasn't that many obligations that, that existed there. Um, we had purchased, if you remember that old Rambler uh, that sat there, we had purchased that Rambler from the um, the chamber. And so that was really our cost obligation that we had as part of that district. And beyond that, um. We, we just didn't have a lot of liabilities in that district, but.
Is that normal to have one house in the district? That's not.
Um, yeah, you can. Yeah, you can do that. That's, I mean, it was uh, it was a good way to get an infill project in there. Um. So, yeah, no, it's uh, I, I always called it the, either the Chambers side or the Rick Ford site.
Right.
Yeah.
Ford building.
The Ford building.
All right, anyone else have any questions? If not, we're looking for a motion to adopt EDA Resolution twenty twenty-three termination tax increment district.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Wong.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gra to uh, EDA twenty twenty-three dash seventy-one discussion. Hearing not all, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Carries. All right, moves us to uh, adopt EDA Resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventy-eight, establishing uh, preliminary Chaska EDA maximum tax levy payable twenty twenty.
Oh, you want to take this one?
Follow up from what Matt presented earlier, when the city uh, adopted the maximum tax levy.
Maybe you want to grab that mic because I don't know if they hear it at home.
To the action Matt reviewed with the city earlier tonight. Um, the EDA is required to adopt a maximum tax levy. Um, and the um, city resolution you adopted earlier tonight also affirmed that proposed levy by the EDA. So this again is the maximum tax levy that the EDA will be establishing. And uh, then that'll be considered for final adoption in December.
So I think it's pretty much the same as.
Well, if you'd like me to go through that presentation again, I could, please. No, I, I will point out the eight point four percent. Keep in mind that the, the things that, that we, we only increase the base uh, amount for the EDA. Um, so when, when you look at eight point four, it, it makes up the uh, the, a little over three, the three point two four percent of the um. Or three point four percent of the new growth plus the five percent of inflation. So we don't add on the staffing study. We don't add on the billing program increase that we just look at the baseline.
Who else got a question? Would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hubbard, second by Commissioner Wong to adopt EDA Resolution twenty twenty-three dash seven eight, establishing firm uh. Preliminary chest EDA maximum tax levy payable twenty twenty-four. Discussion. Hearing not all, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same side. There it is. Uh, anyone have any other business for the EDA?
No.
Hearing crickets, uh, somebody who would like.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by uh, Commissioner Hubbard, second by Commissioner Hatfield. Motion by, uh, Commissioner Hubbard, second by Commissioner Hatfield to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We are adjourned. Have a good night.